Hey, John.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening. Whatever.
It's Monday. It all works.
Yeah, sort of.
How are you?
I can never catch up. I don't know why. You just can't do it.
Have you been back to Hawaii recently?
Can't go.
I thought you could. I thought they were all going nuts.
Recently, and then it got, then it got, it got crazy over there, so I just skipped it. But it, there was a period of about three weeks where it was perfect. Nobody was there. I even knew people that were born there that went and checked into Waikiki because it was absolutely empty. They just went down there to see what it was like in the 50s. Nobody on the beach.
Yeah, I hear it's, it's, it's back at the same level before, but the only difference is it's all Americans there right now.
Yeah, yeah. And it costs $2,100 a week for a rental car. People are buying, driving U-Hauls.
Wow.
Because they don't have any cars.
$2,100 a week? Wow. What do you get for that?
You get whatever Toyota, whatever, you know? When Hertz went down, and the others just never replaced their cars. It just got down to nothing.
Oh, man. Looks like we're, we're in. It's like the public's in. Do we have a?
We're missing Craig, aren't we? I don't see Craig.
I don't see Craig. I don't see Dennis.
I'm here, but no picture.
Can you start your video, Dennis?
There we go.
All right. Excellent.
About Craig? Anybody know anything? Hi.
Who's planning on being here?
Should be here.
Yeah, I think Richard spoke with him today.
To about five o'clockish.
What's that?
I spoke with him to about five, and he was planning on being here.
All right, well, why don't we just?
Why don't we call him?
Yeah, why don't you, John?
Hey, Craig, we're waiting for you. Okay, some, somebody's working on it with you. Okay, he, all right, bye. He's, he's working with Alex or somebody to get in. And I don't see Alex, so there he is.
There he is.
Okay, so we've got a full. All right, so I'm going to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of July 19th, 2021. This meeting's being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Planning commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to Malibu City, excuse me, malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the Sign Up to, Sign Up to Speak tab. Once the item's called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. The recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. And with that, can we call the roll, please, Kathleen?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Mazza?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Wile?
On mute.
You're on mute, David.
Here.
Chair Jennings?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we get a motion on the approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as staff recommends.
Second it? I'll second it. Call the roll, please, Kathleen.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, can we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Agenda for this meeting was properly posted on July 9th, 2021.
Okay, thank you. Thanks just to item two on the agenda, written in oral communications from the public on matters that are within our jurisdiction but are not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers under item 2A?
We do have Casey Ernest signed up to speak, but I believe that person may have an item on the agenda. So they may have another issue, so we should probably check.
Well, it could have another issue besides.
Yes.
One, can we open them up?
I apologize. No issues at this moment. It is for the agenda later in the meeting.
Okay, fine. That's good. All right, hearing none others, we'll have planning commission and staff comments and inquiries, planning commissioners who would like to speak. John?
I just very quickly, this afternoon, we had another fire in Tuna Canyon. In this case, it was an Airbnb. I don't know, that had an airstream and a couple other buildings and a teepee. And fortunately, it was outside of the city, but it's the second one we've had just outside of the city. So we have to be very careful with fire. That's it.
Craig?
Yeah, several things. Yeah, I've been preoccupied by that all afternoon, working radios around here. On the one last weekend, was it when, the one we had in Tuna the other night? I, I meant to get to Susan Duane's today, and I was distracted by the fire here now, but I feel like maybe there's still something wrong with the emergency notifications late at night because that one, I had emails out and phone calls to a few neighbors around 2:00 AM, and the first thing that came out from the city was at 7:30 AM. So I'll talk to Susan about that, but that just seemed sort of strange. Meanwhile, the Coastal Commission has a couple interesting procedures. One is that they, for their meetings on Wednesdays and Thursdays, they don't accept any email communications later than the Friday prior. And it would be great, I mean, we're meeting on Monday, if we could say no more communicates after Friday, that would be really helpful in getting things organized. They also have, they let parties to the hearings choose whether they want to be on video or not. And so I think if they do that at the state level, we should be able to let people decide whether they want to show up visually or not. And I know these things because I, my appeal to Coastal was heard this past week. We had a case a while back when I was on before, and there was a wave uprush issue about it, and I thought it was unusual. We, the planning commission, denied the project, and then it was approved by the council. And I talked to Coastal about it because they themselves had appealed a case that looked not even as bad as this in terms of the wave uprush, and I said, you know, is this of interest to you guys? And they said, yeah, appeal it. We'll, we'll tell you if it's a substantial issue or not. So I did that, and I also included the two-thirds rule that was part of it. And at the time, they said, well, this will take about two months to figure out if it's a substantial issue. So I didn't think that was a big hardship for anybody. And it turned out it took longer because Coastal right away asked the appellant, or the applicant, I should say, for a revised uprush. So point number one about my appeal is that Coastal is now saying, in effect, we don't care when your application was deemed complete. We want you using the 6.15 sea level rise figure from here on out regardless. And so point two of my appeal on the two-thirds rule, they agreed with me that the way we had applied it was, was inaccurate, that the two-thirds rule does not invoke the concept of TDSF, but rather interior floor area. And the staff was very clear in their recommendation that I was correct on that, but they said, this is a local matter. It's not a matter of statewide significance, so we're not going to recommend it to the very busy Coastal Commission. So basically, I was right on both those things, and I think going forward, we need to be looking at those issues. And I talked to Richard some about, do we tweak the two-thirds rule, take it to ZERACIS or something? And he may or may not have a word about that at this point. And I should mention too that I have, I distilled my hearing down to a two and a half minute video. I just cut, cut the, the relevant portions together. If anybody wants to see that, I'm not going to play it now and waste anybody's time, but I've, I've got the video, and it's very clear, you can see the Coastal Commission's take on those couple of issues. So that's it for my comments now. Thanks.
Anybody else? I will, I'll mention that I think most of you probably have heard that the, there was a court of appeal decision that basically says that the Coastal Commission and the Department of, what is it, DHS, Department of, yeah, whatever the State Department is that regulates mobile home communities, that they have concurrent jurisdiction. So maybe Richard will have a comment about how we want to address that additional workload, should it come our way. Apart from that, I will, I will echo what staff told Craig as far as the two-thirds rule is concerned. The, the local coastal plan is Malibu's local coastal plan, and when it was adopted, we were told specifically by the members of the commission, it's your plan, go and go enforce it. So it is up to us to make our own determinations as to what we want to do about that. That's it. Anybody else? Staff? Richard?
Thank you very much, Chair. And just to follow up on the two points, so yes, as to Chair Jennings mentioning, the local coastal program is a document that came around after our city's municipal code. This two-thirds discussion was originally in there and then taken from there and put into the local coastal program. And as the Coastal Commission has informed us before, they've told us before in a call that, you know, the LCP is our LCP for us to interpret. However, you know, the next time we have an issue like this brought up before the planning commission, it's definitely something we can discuss. And then also, I want to do a bit of history, searching, seeing when we created the city's municipal code, what did we talk about in relation to two-thirds? Is there a reason why it's called out floor area versus TDSF? Was there something that happened at those council meetings? And then lastly, this is definitely something that could be considered for perhaps ZERACIS meeting if the commission and council would like the, the staff to revisit it and look at if perhaps this changes impacts or how this could shape future development. And the second part about the mobile home parks, that is something that I'll be discussing with Trevor on because at present, our zoning ordinances really only address the clubhouses and those uses. In these mobile home parks, we don't have development standards other than our general development standards when it comes to these coaches. And to me, I think it is something for us to look at because if we are going to be regulating those, then perhaps we want to make sure we have rules tailored to them. Trevor has something he wants to say.
Sure, I was gonna say it's gonna be interesting how it works together because I don't think there's going to be any impact about how these things are constructed or built, but it may deal with more placement issues or wastewater issues or things like that. Probably the nexus that we're probably going to see where there's real application between the two of them. But this is one decision that's come out here. It's a left turn from where things have been, and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll deal with it as it comes.
Okay, thank you. I'm struggling here with my.
I have a question if you would allow it.
I'm sorry, what?
I have a question if you'd allow it.
Sure, John.
Trevor, as my understanding is, the Department of Transportation, whoever does coaches, has standards for building these things, and they're supposed to be towable, and you've got to have a hitch on it. But in the last, I've noticed in the last, say, 15 years, in the parks, there's quite a bit of, basically, houses being built where the, the, the mobile home is. They're no longer mobile. And so that's probably where we're going to need some codes because we're not going to tell them how to build a coach in some factory in Fontana, but we may have some codes that say it's got to meet DOT or something to be there. That's my only, it's just a, I know you've got to do research on this, but I think that's the problem.
Then you've concluded your comments, Richard?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to the consent calendar now. Does anybody want to pull any of the items from this consent calendar? Yes, Craig?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to pull 3B5 for a quick clarification. I talked to Richard about this already.
Okay, anybody else? All right, Kathleen, anybody from the community that's asked to pull any of the items on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion then on items 3B?
I move we consent to items 3B1 through 4.
That's right. I'll second it. Call the roll, please, Kathleen.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Actually, those were all receive and file items except for, they were all receiving and file.
Receiving and file.
We have to vote on a minute, so we did that.
No, we don't vote on receiving files, but, but we did it. It's no harm, no foul. All right, let's go to 3B5. Craig, you want just a question answered? Do you want a staff report?
No, no staff report necessary. This, this one just raised the issue of how much the planning manager can approve administratively. And, and the reason the issue was raised is that there is a list of things that he or she can approve under 13.13.1. Five items there, and then separately, 13.29 is a section about OWTS. And so I raised the question about whether those things can be combined and conflated? Can you be approving something in both of those at the same time, or does that cross some sort of threshold? And the reason it even came to my attention was that the way the staff report was written, the two sections were conflated in the reporting as though they were all sort of, of one section. And so Richard and I talked about it and, and came to some understanding about how it would be more clear in future to call those out separately. I still have sort of a latent question about how, I mean, this had a site plan review in it and four or five other things in it. And it just seems like some clarity on what the threshold is for when something has to come to the planning commission. It's, this, this still, I, I myself still have some residual confusion about how much is too much, as it were.
Your question for Richard?
So on this, the, the, one of the first questions was the, the blending of the wastewater system, the OWTS, and the, the house project. So Section 1313, as Commissioner Hill brought up, has a list of things that the planning manager, director can approve, and those being subdivisions, or excuse me, there are lot mergers, and there are also additions to houses. There are also some multifamily stuff. It talks about not going above $100,000. And, and then in a separate section, 13.29, it specifically calls out septic systems, separate from the rest. And in this particular report, the two blended together under one permit, but individual reviews did take place. We, to address the wastewater permit findings, on the top of page six, there is a paragraph that addresses Chapter 18. Chapter 18 of the LCP is focused on wastewater. And in that paragraph, we make the summary that the project was reviewed for consistency with both MMC and the LCP requirements, and is consistent with all of those requirements, so that blanket statement's made. In the future, we can certainly break out the individual findings to make it a bit more clear for the commission. In terms of some of the other work that involves site plan reviews, site plan reviews, as long as they fall within the administrative category, the permit, the CDP stays in the administrative category. Those are, those are definitely decisions that the planning director can make. If it was a variance, that's definitely outside of the planning director's purview. And if the site is located within the appeal zone or has a future improvements deed restriction that calls out for some reason in a hearing, those are types of things that would prevent us from keeping them at the administrative level. But in general, additions to a home located outside the appeal zone, that typically is something that is at the director's level and is reported to the commission. And of course, as always, if the commission feels that there is something flawed in the decision or the director overstepped their bounds in making that decision, it can always be pulled with a vote, for a vote by the commission. And if the majority of the commission wishes to bring it back as a full hearing, we would then come, we would set the, the item for a full hearing date, meeting date, and renotice it as such. I hope I covered all the bases there.
Yeah, thank you. I do see John's hand up there, though.
Just add that, that, take a look at, at, at planning LCP interpretation 11, which basically says that if it's within the director's purview, then that should be it, and the, the commission shouldn't go beyond that.
Thank you.
I need a, I need a, a motion on the, no, it's a receive and file, there again, so we don't need a motion. All right, I'm, I'm going to take, I'm sorry, 30 seconds. My audio is, is terrible. I've got a set of earphones on here. I'm going to try to, to. What's that?
John's got his hand up.
Yeah, John?
Do you want me to wait for you to fix your?
Yeah, can, just give me 30 seconds. Let me see if I can pick up a pair of earphones.
So anybody seen any good movies lately?
Before they close the theaters again?
They're, yeah, right. Apparently, the Chinook helicopters are doing a good job up over here.
If it's that big one, I can only imagine.
Yeah, yeah. It's really good. It's a good thing to see.
Did they have that one in, up today?
Yeah. They, they also had a, looked like a Foscheck plane, but I, we weren't sure. It wasn't the Super Scooper, but it was a big plane, and we couldn't tell if that's what it was, or maybe it was just spotting.
So I've, I've given the fire department, sheriff department, knows the combo to the gate there at Tuna Canyon. We had the last fire. I went up there, and there were a number of guys up there, and they like it being on the very top lot up there because it's got the view, and they can see everything from that Lot 3 at the top at the 500 elevation. They really liked it. So I'm happy that everybody, you know, that's going to be put to use. The hydrant obviously is on up, everything's on up there, water power, everything. So they, they need a hydrant. They've got one up there.
Dennis, wait. Sorry about that. I, I'm going to have trouble hearing. I'm, I'm listening to my, my computers speakers, which are not optimal. So bear with me if I have trouble, or help me out if I have trouble.
Question, Richard? Number one, isn't, isn't a three to one slope, doesn't that require variance for being over two and a half to one? And that's the case in this case?
Oh, per the LCP, I, three, so not in Point Dume. My preferences with that statement, we're not in Point Dume. So if you're outside of Point Dume, three to one flatter, that's by right. Two and a half to, two and a half to one to three to one, that is a site plan review category. And when it's steeper than two and a half to one, that's when it becomes a variance. And DDA, you could nod or whatever is easiest for you. But I believe this one fell between two and a half to three to one, correct?
That's correct.
I, I believe you. Okay, my second question is, why do we see so many septic tanks when you can approve one? Apparently.
If I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Mazza, you guys, you wanted to talk about them. I've made comments all the time. I don't want to.
I know, but there's some reason we've gotten like 30 septic tanks in the last six months, and all of a sudden, it's now consent item. And I was just wondering, what's the difference between the ones we've heard and this one?
So DDA, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is not a fire-related project.
That's correct. This is for a second unit with an associated OWTS system.
So it's because this is something new and not a replacement, and also not affected by fire. This is expansion. And so because of that, on a property that it's going to, so, so two things I should say. It's serving a, a new use, that second unit, and then non, not being a fire-affected parcel. That's why this, this is an administrative permit.
Okay, I, and I don't want to waste time here, but I was under the impression that you had the ability to approve primary residences, not second units.
What you might be thinking about, John, is the fact that, that accessory dwelling units or second units are not considered to be exempt altogether under.
In this case, you're saying they are?
No, no, no. They're not exempt altogether from getting a coastal development permit. You still have to get a coastal development permit, but it's just at, at the administrative level rather than at the commission level.
So that's an ACDP instead of CDP?
That's correct, provided.
And that's allowed in the paragraph, it's the first one, the 13 blah blah, that gives you the five things, $100,000.
No, it's 13.29. It's in there.
I thought that was only for primary residences.
Trevor, what, what John's getting at is the second unit now, not the wastewater.
Oh, not the wastewater? Okay.
And also, part of our direction, and this is what the chair is getting towards, is, as part of our direction on how to process these secondary dwelling units with the new ADU laws, part of what the Coastal Commission had informed staff about and what the city has initiated doing, is that to be consistent with state law, provided the ADU meets all of the, the criteria of the coastal program, it's processed as an administrative permit, so basically reporting. And eventually, you know, the, the state's goal would be that we sign these off without bringing them to the commission. However, we don't have rules like that in place. And so the middle ground between the state's ADU laws and the coastal act have been to process these as administrative permits.
Richard, we're going a little bit beyond the scope of this application here, so, you know, if we want to come back with a, for the report on that, we can do it. We should stick to the agenda we have here.
Okay, well, it, it's a receive and file unless somebody wants to bring a motion to, wants to move to bring it back, so.
I move to receive and file 5.
Okay.
You'd be fine.
Without objections, received and filed. Let's go on to item 4A. This is the coastal development permit and the variances for A18868PCH. Get a staff report on that. Lily?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The project before you tonight is a single-family residence at 18868PCH. This project was continued from the April 19th planning commission meeting. At that meeting, the planning commission recommended that the applicant redesign the project to reduce the C-word extent of the proposed building and increase the front yard setback. The applicant revised the project plans and will be presented for your consideration. This presentation focuses on the changes that the applicant made in response to the planning commission's feedback. Next slide. The subject property is located on the eastern edge of Malibu. The subject property adjacent property at 18878PCH is surrounded by a shared fence. Overhings and a storage structure are along both front property lines. No habitable structures are on the subject property. Next slide. Subsequent to the April 19th planning commission meeting, the applicant revised the project plans to shift the rear extent of the residence 10 feet landward from the originally proposed building string line. These photos are from a July 2nd, 2021 story pole inspection facing west. Next slide. These photos are also from July 2nd facing east. Next slide. These photos show a comparison of the story poles installed in March 2021 on the left. And the story poles installed in July on the right facing west. These are not taken in the exact same location, but you can see that the story poles are more inland in July than they were in March. Next slide. And here's a comparison of the story poles from January 2021 on the left and from July 2021 on the right facing east. The January historical placement is identical to the March 2021 story pole placement. Next slide. And in addition, to adjusting the rear yard setback, the applicant also increased the front yard setback at the direction of the planning commission. The slide shows the west elevation as presented at the April 19th planning commission meeting on the left. Which proposes a 10 foot setback on the first floor and a four foot setback on the second floor. The elevation on the right shows the revised 12 foot proposed setback on the first floor. The second floor setback remains unchanged. Next slide. The previously proposed project involves construction of a 3,887 square foot two-story residence. And a 375 square foot garage for a total of 4,212 square feet. The revised proposal is for a 3,403 square foot residence and 375 square foot attached garage. For a total of 3,778 square feet and a reduction of 434 square feet overall. The project also. Involves proposed decks in hard state, a retractable beach stairs, grading and retaining walls. Onstate wastewater treatment system and seawall and an offer to dedicate a lateral access. Next slide. The project involves three variance requests for the building to extend seaward of the building streamline. And for the deck to extend seaward of the deck streamline on the seaward side and a reduction of the front yard setback facing PCH on the landward side. Next slide. The proposed height of 24 feet for a flat roof remains unchanged. Next slide. So as far as the, the building streamline, the solid red line at the top identifies the required building streamline. Which is established by drawing a line from the nearest adjacent corner of the two existing buildings located on either side of the subject site. The dash green line identifies the previously proposed building streamline, which proposed to utilize the existing buildings on non-adjacent properties located on either side of the subject site. The up coast property at 18904 PCH and the down coast property at 18862 PCH. Several questions were raised regarding the legality of the structure at 18904 PCH. And planning staff did some research and located the plans indicating that the structure in its current configuration is a legal non-consumming structure. The solid blue line in between the red line and the green lines identified the revised proposed building streamline. Which has been shifted 10 feet landward from the originally proposed building streamline. The new building streamline isn't so much a streamline as it no longer ties to a corner of any building. But it's simply just setback 10 feet landward from the previous building streamline. Next slide. For the, uh, for the deck variance, the deck is proposed to extend seaward of the code compliance streamline. Which is shown in red. And this is established by drawing a line from the nearest adjacent corner of the two existing decks located on either side of the subject site. In this case, it's 18888 PCH up coast and the down coast property at 18862 PCH. The solid purple line identifies the previously proposed deck string line. And the turquoise line, dash line represents the revised deck string line. Which extends 10 feet beyond the new proposed structure streamline. Next slide. A third variance is requested to allow a greater than 50% reduction of the front yard setback. The existing front yard setback for the easterly neighbor at 18862 is four feet. The westerly neighboring property at 1878 is not developed. So the default front yard setback for that property applies, which is 20 feet. Which is both of the neighboring setbacks are shown in blue. Therefore, a front yard setback of 12 feet is required for the subject property, which is the average of the front yard setbacks at the immediate neighboring properties. So this is shown as a green dashed line here. The first floor footprint has been revised to increase the front yard setback from the previously proposed 10 feet to the required 12 feet. So no variance is requested for the first floor. But the proposed front yard setback for the second floor remains unchanged. And it's four feet from the property line to show as a gold dashed line here. Next slide. As a result of the redesign, the first floor area was reduced by 262 square feet. The before floor plan is shown on the top and the current floor plan is shown on the bottom here. Next slide. And the second floor was reduced by 217 square feet. All other components of the project remain unchanged, including the placement of the seawall, lumber of the seawall streamline. And the five foot view corridors on both sides of the property. No development is proposed in the view corridors with the exception of two six foot high clear glass doors and pilasters. The applicant is also voluntarily offering to dedicate a lateral access easement on the property along the shore. Next slide. Following publication of the agenda report, staff received several pieces of public correspondence. The applicant pointed out an error in the gender report noting that Guy Nia Deck, the project applicant, did not in fact send an email opposing the project. The, that was a typo. The, um, agenda report also emits a letter in support of the project. Additional correspondence was received from members of the public raising opposition to the three variance requests. And complaints about the story pole installation process. The applicant's representative also sent a letter describing the project background. One letter of support was also submitted. And earlier today, the story pole certification was circulated to the planning commission and interesting parties at the request of an interested party. Next slide. And with that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the project as proposed. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lily. Disclosures, please. Dennis?
I went out, went out again on, I think it was either the second or the third, July 3rd. Planner Rudolph was there and one of the applicants. And, um, I just, I looked over what the, what the new pole location was and went from there.
David?
Uh, I, I did not get back out on the beach side when the new poles were up. I saw it from the highway side again. I had been out previously. I had a couple of phone calls from concerned residents. But nothing that isn't in the report.
John?
Uh, I drove by, I could not get to the beach side, so I, I saw the story poles from the highway side.
Greg?
Uh, I went down again. I, from the highway side, I stood up on a planter and I could look over the roof and saw them there clearly from an angle. And I also went down on tuna beach with my telephoto lens and looked at them from that angle and could see them quite clearly that way, too.
Okay, none for me. Questions of staff?
Just a very quick one. Go ahead.
Okay, John.
The view corridors on, on your first floor plan view that you showed us. View corridors are supposed to be five feet. But when you look at the plans, there are two feet of non-permeable. Uh, pilasters, so the view corridor is only three feet. How do we reconcile that with the requirements of the code?
Mr. Maza, the, the floor plan shows a clear glass door and pilasters. I, I read that to mean that the, the clear. The doors and the pilasters are both clear. We can make sure that that is in fact the case.
You're, you're saying that the thing that holds up the doors made out of glass? And pilaster is what you put the hinges on. I can't imagine that's made out of glass.
We can confirm that with the applicant, I, um, but my understanding.
Uh, the other question I have, and then we'll go on. I, I want to hear the public, but, um. I watched. The coastal commission hearing on. The house that Craig had appealed and they had required. The applicant to use the 2018 interpretation of sea rise. In the staff report. We mentioned the 2018, but they used the 2015. I don't want to get into a situation where it gets, goes before coastal again. Is, is there a reason why we didn't use the updated direction from the coastal commission?
The city coastal engineer had reviewed and approved the project, I believe, prior to the issuance of the 2018 guidance. And, um, the, the applicant also, I, I believe the applicant's coastal engineer is available to answer any questions.
Okay. Dennis, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, yeah, I just, just real quick, planner Rudolph, I just want to find, want to know. I just saw the, the blue line. Of the poles were moved back. Does that mean they were moved back to where the old wall or the fence was out there, the glass fence? Did they, as we had talked when I was out there and told the applicant, right? When I measured the poles, they'd only moved them two feet. And Commissioner Hill and I had made the recommendation, along with everybody else here, that it need to come back. And now, is that what I'm getting? Is that what I'm understanding's happened? Did they, since, since the pictures you just showed, have they changed their mind and moved it back the full 10 feet, not just two?
No, the, the 10 foot difference was from the April planning commission staff report to this staff report. The, the applicant did push the house back 10 feet. Since the last time this project was heard before the planning commission. But the story poles that we saw out on the field on July 2nd represent the current proposal.
So that's, that's, they still have it as the end of the mass of the building right there and then the deck.
That, that's correct. The story pole photos shown tonight reflect the proposed project.
Okay.
Greg?
Um, first off, thank you, Lily, for that slide with the additional correspondence. I, I think that's a helpful, good thing to have to sort of summarize that kind of thing. I, I had a question, though, about the, the TDSF. The, just now you stated that the prior version was 4,212 on the total TDSF. Um, but actually the last staff report, the actual printed staff report was 3,837. So one of those numbers is not right.
I, I think there was, there was some confusion there. The, the 3,837 square foot refers to the habitable structure. The, the TDSF for the previous project was 4,212 square feet.
So you're saying the 4212 is the number that is now down to 3778?
That's right.
Okay, I'm still, I'm still with Dennis there. I didn't, the poles were not pulled in as far as we had talked about them being pulled in. So I can't, I can't say whether that difference of whatever it was, the two. Whether that square footage accounts for a full 10 foot. But what, but, well, let's back up. How much, what is the total square footage reduction that they've made on the TDSF?
434 square.
434, if that, okay, that, that sort of jibes if they brought it in 10 feet. If it's approximately 30 feet wide, then that would be about 300 square feet on the ocean side. Plus they brought it in a couple feet on the other side, so that would be another 60 feet. But that sounds ballpark.
David?
I'm sorry, but I'm confused based on the answer to Dennis's question. I, and the report says solid blue line identifies revised proposed building string line. Which has been shifted 10 feet landward from originally proposed string line. I thought Dennis asked whether in fact it was a full 10 foot reduction. And you said, no, just two feet, if I'm understanding this correctly. Is it 10 or is it two?
It's 10 feet from the previous version that the planning commission saw in April.
And from the version that we said, we, we would suggest that you move it 10 feet back. That was the last time we saw it and that's what they've agreed to do.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, now I'm confused. Jeff, could I ask a question?
Okay, John.
When you showed us the story poles, the side by side, the, I guess, January and July. Were they supposed to be 10 feet further in? Cause it sure doesn't look like it. Could you put up that picture?
Yes, that would be slide. Um, slide six.
Now you're saying that. That those poles on the, on the right are 10 feet towards that glass wall closer than they were in January? It, it doesn't appear to be 10 feet.
The, they are supposed to be 10 feet. It, I took it from a different, I didn't exactly measure from where I took the photo and, and how I was oriented. So I, I wouldn't rely necessarily on, on these photos. But, but the plans do show a 10 foot, um, decrease.
Yeah, what I'm looking at is I assume those walls are four feet high. And there sure aren't two and a half of those on the side difference. That's why I'm wondering about the story poles. So, but whatever. I, I measured these on the right. The ones on the left were 10 feet. The ones on the right, when I went there on June, uh, July 2nd, they're only eight feet. They moved them in two feet. That's all they did. If they have decided, if they have decided that they are now going to take it to the glass wall, that is what was, what we asked them to do the last time. They have not done that.
David?
Well, if, uh, if you look on page three of this, of the staff report required proposed building and deck string line. It shows the red line and the blue line and that the blue line is 10 feet further back. So I'm still confused as to why the story poles don't reflect this, if this is in fact what has been agreed.
Yes, Craig?
Looking at the story poles again, if we could have that slide back up on there. It looks to me like on the July picture, the, where the poles are there is approximately where the edge of the deck line would be. Based on what we have been talking about before. Dennis nodding his head. I think that's what we're looking at.
But not the mass.
Trevor?
Jennings, maybe, uh, the applicant could, could address some of these story pole issues. But I also want to clarify, Commissioner Smith, you said you measured something. Can you explain what you were doing?
We measured the, the first time we went out, the poles on the left were 10 feet. When I went back on July 2nd.
How did you, how did you measure this?
Dennis, how, how did you measure the, the?
10 feet from what?
Yeah.
From the glass wall.
Okay.
Which we asked them to do in the first place after our first meeting.
Okay, I, I would suggest having the applicant address the, the story poles. There seems to be some confusion here.
Right. Okay, so let's move on and, and get the public hearing going. Kathleen, do you know who is in the applicant team?
We have Dustin Wimmer, Guy Meadek and Reg Brown. And then we have two members of the public, Jason Ventress and Lloyd Ahern, who would like to speak as well.
They are not members of the applicant team?
No.
Okay. Uh, okay, Mr. Warmer?
Good evening, Chair Jennings. Commission, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Uh, you have 15 minutes. And you can use some of it. Some of it or all of it. Some of it or all of it. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can use some of it or all of it for your presentation. You can reserve some for rebuttal if you choose to do that. But it's 15 minutes for your entire team. So begin whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. My name is Dustin Wimmer. I'm here tonight representing the applicant for the 1-8868 PCH home. Next slide. So a little bit of background. At our, the last hearing was on April 19th, and there was a pretty robust conversation. But at the end of the hearing, I think our staff kind of went through, the city attorney had summarized the commission's direction and gave myself the option to either request a decision from the commission that night, or to continue the item to a later, later date and redesign the project. More specifically, the attorney said that it appears the commission will not be able to make the findings as proposed, but with modification to pull the structure back by about 10 feet in the backyard and two feet on the first floor in the front yard. With those modifications, perhaps you could resubmit those, and you will be able to find an approval from this commission that would be able to make the findings for a proposal that would fit that, if you're willing to submit a redesign. And so at that hearing with that option, we decided to redesign the project per the planning commission's direction and accept a continuance. So after the hearing, we redesigned the plans. We pushed the building back from the previously proposed string line 10 feet back landward, and then also on the first floor, moved the building back two feet. Those plans were submitted on June 1st, and staff concurred that the revised plans were consistent with the commission's direction that night. Next slide, please. I'll kind of go quick these, because this is covered pretty well, I think, by staff, but this is your first floor. Next slide. On the front side, you'll see that the setback is now a minimum of 12 feet. That was moved from 10 feet previously. Next slide. In the blue dash line was the original string line that is not moved. That's the same string line that the building had abutted previously. And the building was, has now been redesigned to push back 10 feet from that previous line. I will say that as far as some of the story poll consideration, if you look at the original proposal, there was an angle point so that the westerly, in this case, the, the upper left-hand corner of the building was, was angled in. So, so that one of the story polls at least would have been a lot closer landward than maybe this particular design, which is kind of parallel to the proposed string line. And that might be some of the discrepancy, depending on which measurement was taken from which, which pole. Next slide, please. Same thing for the second floor. As mentioned, no changes were made on the PCH side of the building. Next slide. Again, the original string line in the building was moved back 10 feet from that point. Next slide. This is the original building depth comparison exhibit that I presented at the last hearing, and also attached to some, some correspondence to the planning commission and staff. As kind of a refresher, the subject property is outlined in yellow. You'll see there's an 84-foot dimension, kind of going through the middle of that yellow parcel. The previous string line is the green dash line. Then this exhibit was intended to show the two buildings that we were proposing to string line to previously. Those buildings had depths from front property line to the back of the building of 83 on the left-hand side. That's 18904. And on the right-hand side, 1-8862, which is 85 feet deep. And then again, our proposal was just in the average of that 84. In addition, we took a sampling of five houses on either side, what we call typical homes in the neighborhood. And if you average all those homes out, it comes out just under 84 feet. And then again, with our feeling that with our previous proposal, that was consistent with the neighborhood being at 84-foot deep. Next slide, please. So this exhibit has been updated to represent the new proposal, which again is 10 feet further landward. The, you'll see a kind of purple, purplish-red line that's dashed now in a 10-foot dimension from the previous green line to the new purple line. And the building depth is now 74-foot deep from the property line to the back. Again, the average depth of homes in this area is about 84 feet. We are now 74 feet, which is about 10 feet less than the average. And also, it's worth noting that if you look at this sampling of homes, the least deep home of these 10 homes is 76 feet deep, and our proposed home is now 74-foot deep. Next slide, please. So this exhibit is just more of a visual aid. Place the footprint of the proposed building in brown. So you can just kind of see some sort of relationship between the proposed building and the other building footprints. Next slide. There was quite a bit of correspondence on the story poll installation. Just a little bit of history. Story polls were originally installed in April 2019, January 2021, and again in March 2021. Each time the story polls were installed, they were certified by licensed surveyor and inspected by staff. In addition, the story poll installation in March 2021 was noticed ahead of time, based on planning commission's request to allow time for the commission and the community to attend a viewing, where staff was there, as well as an owner representative was onsite to answer any questions. At the April hearing, the planning commission did not direct the applicant to install story polls aforetime. That wasn't part of the direction. However, staff did reach out to us after the hearing and requested that we install the story polls again, based on the revised plans. In addition, staff requested that the story polls be survey certified and inspected again, and for advance notice to be provided, so that staff could notify the commission and community members. This was originally scheduled for June 24th. There was some correspondence that said that the applicant moved it. Actually, the, the original reason why on June 24th, we were actually, staff reached out to us on the 23rd, the day before, and had received some correspondence from neighboring, from the neighbors requesting more time notice. And so the, the time was moved down to the week later. And ultimately, the story polls ended up being up from July 2nd through July 5th. These were again certified by survey and inspected by staff. Next slide. So in summary, again, looking at analysis, ultimately, for the variance findings, seeing if, if the project is getting some sort of special privilege that the other homeowners or homes in the, in the area have. The proposed project, we looked at sampling homes, five on the other side, they're all about 85, 84-foot deep on average. In our original proposal, we felt was consistent with that. However, moving it, the house 10 feet further from the original proposal results in a 74-foot deep house measured from property line, making it the least deep typical house in the surrounding neighborhood, and 10 feet less than the average homes in the area. Based on our understanding and agreed upon by staff, the original proposal was consistent with the neighborhood, compliant with the code, and met the variance findings. However, in spirit of cooperation and to address the commission's concerns at the last meeting, and also concerns voiced by the community, the project has been significantly modified. We respectfully request the planning commission vote tonight to approve our revised design. Next slide. And I'll just leave it on this slide, just in case there's any questions. This might be the most informative exhibit to kind of understand what we're proposing.
Okay, I'm sorry. Does that conclude?
Yes, sorry, thank you.
All right, thank you. Who else do we have, Kathleen?
We have Jason Ventress and Lloyd Ahern. And that has six minutes and six seconds left.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Six minutes and six seconds. Mr. Ventress?
Yes, 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 yes. Yes, I'm present.
Okay, it sounds like you're a bunch of you're present. All right, you're, you've had three minutes.
Okay, ready, go. Good evening, Chair Jennings and Planning Commission. Jason Ventress here, 25-year adjacent property owner and longtime Malibu local. I oppose item foray, and I'm very concerned, even scared, as to the ramifications of allowing a development which requests three variances, the special privilege to build on our coastline. The entire Malibu coastline, Las Tunas Beach community is in uproar and at risk with this complicated application. String line variances in of themselves are very controversial. But one application with three variants is an applicant that is trying to use every trick in the book to confuse the interested parties and staff with latent info is one too many. Mr. Last-minute, 11th-hour, or always comes lately, has a pattern of submissions to staff and public which require more needed information and clarification for an intelligent decision. Today, and only today, did we receive the requested for the last two weeks story stole, story poll certification. Parker, Exhibit A. It's up there. It only refers to the height and elevation, not placement of story polls on the beach. It's a limited certification. I have three recent emails with contract planner Lilly requesting the story poll certification, and a meeting for clarification with applicants per the suggestion, and that of Chair, of her, and that of Chair Jennings. The applicant respectfully declined, and as of Friday, at the end of the day, did not provide the certification or responses to my Page 3, Figure 1 on the staff report I made through Lilly. Today, again, last minute, we received a supplement from Diamond West, submitted last Friday at 2:39 PM, a day when Lilly was not in office, as I tried to meet up with her at the city to view submissions as an interested party and have correspondence requesting such. Well, commissioners, I believe in good faith, and this applicant is testing the system with last-minute motives and trying to send a message that Malibu is soft on string line interpretations and allowing multiple variances for a single parcel. My family comply with the current laws as they work and establish conformity. So have many others. What an out-of-area, what mess, what? An out-of-area person can just buy a beachfront lot and request three variances and delay being transparent as to their intentions? I call for denial and for maintaining our coastline with the laws as they stand. No special privilege and no future waste of your valuable time. Commissioners, my plea is that you protect our coastline and the cohesive Las Tunas Beach community, whom have all voiced opposition to this project. Deny foray and keep Malibu a way of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Lloyd Ahern?
Lloyd Ahern, yes.
Three minutes, Lloyd.
Right here. Am I unmuted, guys?
Yeah, here you are.
Okay. Parker, could you please go back to the story poll, I mean, the story poll certificate that Jason just had up? Thanks. No, not, not that, the, the one that was just up, the story poll certification. Okay. The reason that you, the commissioners were all confused at the beginning was because this whole thing, this whole thing has been a last, as Jason says, a very last minute, come, come in with stuff for, that is very complicated and never addresses the real problem. If you take the time, I don't want to take the time right now, but nothing in the bottom of this, this story poll certificate discusses the landward part of the, of the, of the seaward part of the, of the string line. It only talks about elevation, so it completely avoids the subject. We asked for it for four weeks for this story poll certificate, and we never got it. Back in March, Jeff, you said, would you please get together with these people? It would be smart for you to do it. And also, Mr. Mazza said the same thing. Well, Lilly also asked for it about two or three weeks ago. You can confirm that with him, Lilly. And they respectfully declined to meet with us. So you told them, Mr. Jennings and Mr. Mazza and Lilly, and they did not want to talk to us. The whole problem with the story polls were, it was supposed to go up Wednesday and Thursday and Wednesday and Thursday before the weekend, because of the low tides that were acceptable for being able to view it. It was going to be in the morning. So on Wednesday, which they promised Lilly they'd be there, weren't there. Lilly, we called Lilly in the afternoon. She calls and she sends us an email. She says, well, they're going to do it Thursday. Didn't do it Thursday. Now, Friday before the weekend of the thing, they come at 7 o'clock in the morning, without any of us being there to watch the story, having to witness the story poll surveyor, because we don't believe this thing. Everything talks about things that aren't relevant. We don't care about the elevation of this thing. So I just want to say, the reason this thing is confusing is because it's meant to be confusing. And we would like you guys to do some hard questioning to this Mr. Wilper. And I am, I can answer any question that you guys got, and so can Jason. And I am going to just leave it at that and just say, I hope you deny this project. And, and when they ever do put story polls in, there's a story poll guide there, because all of this, what Dennis Smith said, Commissioner Smith, said about that measuring, he's right. Thank you, and I hope you reject this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lloyd. Anybody else, Kathleen?
No, just the applicant for rebuttal.
Okay, the applicant's got six minutes and six seconds. Mr. Wimmer?
I'll make it kind of quick. I did submit a letter that hopefully the commissioners got over the weekend and tried to address a little bit of the idea that we haven't reached out to the community. Actually, personally emailed Lloyd and tried reaching him out by phone a couple times back in March. Actually, after Chair Jennings had recommended I do so, and I did not hear from, from Lloyd by email or phone, getting any sort of response. We did have that kind of default community meeting. We had the story polls back in March, and I believe that Lloyd and Jason were both at that meeting that both had represented from our group, but also actually commissioners, and kind of became a, a community meeting on its own. We haven't been requested to have any sort of community meeting since the April 19th hearing. The one request that we did get through Lilly that we did decline, because it was just difficult, was to have a set meeting time, so that community members could also be there when the actual surveyor was there doing the certification. And it was just, it was already difficult enough at that point. We'd already had to reschedule the story polls more than once. And so it just seemed something just difficult to try to put together and commit to. So as far as the community requests for, for meetings, we did reach out. We also reached out to, I think, every single commissioner, and some commissioners took us up on that, and some didn't. But we certainly made the attempts to reach out and have as much correspondence as possible, leading up to the, particularly the April hearing.
Okay.
If there's any questions, I'd be happy to ask them.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Wimmer. Let me just make, make it clear that, you know, from my position, I don't believe that projects have to be designed by community consensus. But where there is a controversial project, it's just good politics to meet with your neighbors and try to, try to eliminate as many of the problems as you can. Lilly, I've got a problem. Actually, let me ask Mr. Wimmer. Could you open up his mic? And put up the, the diagram of the, the deck string line, the first floor deck. His, his diagram of the first floor. That was the first diagram he used, I think. Anybody help me out here?
One, page three of 30?
No, not, not, not the one from the staff report, the one that Mr. Wimmer used in this, in this presentation. Back, it was, I think it was his first diagram he put up. Yeah, yeah, there we go. There we go. So I'm wondering whether the 10-foot versus two-foot confusion might be because this, the, the story polls were put up to mark the edge of the deck string line rather than the edge of the the building string line. Is that possible, Mr. Wimmer? Or is that?
I don't, I, I don't think so. You know what might be a good exhibit? I was trying to explain, but it's kind of hard without an exhibit. In this, in the staff report, there was a picture, one of the pages. Um, in this, in the staff report, there was a picture, one of the pages had, or the presentation had a both the first floor of the previous proposal and the current proposal.
Um, do you have a reference particularly?
That would be slide 14.
Okay, before we leave that Mr. Wimmer's diagram though, let, let me go back to the, to the previous uh, the one you just had up there. So the line on the left is the former building string line, right? And, and again, my concern has been having the building aligned consistently with, with the other buildings up and down coast. And I, I took your diagram, Mr. Wimmer, in the last hearing and, you know, drew the little lines where I thought it ought to be. Yeah. Your, your building string line and that project, uh, was, I thought, uh, cutting off the corners and instead of being consistent was, was cutting through the, the, uh, vacant properties to, to, to move the entire project uh, seaward. Um, and I made, you know, I argued about that at the last hearing. Now, when I look at the deck string line here, it's even more aggressively pushed out toward the ocean uh, than the original building string line was. And that's, that, that troubles me. I, I know that, I guess, Lily's position is that, you know, if it's going to be a string line, it has to connect to something. And so it might as well connect to that, to that seaward little building that's out there, but I, I don't see it that way. The way I see it, you are asking for relief from the statutory string line. I think you're entitled to a variance from that, from that statutory string line. But the fact that you're entitled to a variance doesn't say that, you know, doesn't tell me that you have to go all the way out to the most seaward adjacent, uh, structure. I mean, I think it, you know, you, you have to, we're entitled to require you to be consistent with the outline of, uh, of the other buildings in the neighborhood. And it doesn't seem to me that that string line is, is, that the deck string line is in keeping with that spirit. But I'll, I'll, I'll just let that go and let you go on to the, to the diagram that you want to do to reference. That really wanted to reference, uh, the one that had the two overlaid.
Jeff?
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to see if I misunderstand something. This diagram is the new first floor, as I understand it.
That's correct.
And it shows a six foot deck. Okay?
It shows what?
A six foot deck.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, um, and I can't see how the building can move back 10 feet and the story polls are two feet different. How you have a six foot deck? So I would like to see his comparison of what it is now before. The deck's the same six feet. It didn't move. String line didn't move.
Okay, do we have that diagram? Do we know which one we're looking for, Lily?
I think the slide that Dustin's referring to is slide 14 of the staff presentations. 14 shows the first floor, 15 shows the second floor.
Yeah, either one. It's quite fine.
Okay. We see the deck on there?
I'm sorry, John.
So that, so on the, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Mazza, but so the, the upper, uh, plan is the, the original. These aren't scaled, so they're actually shorter than one another. But what I wanted to focus on, the, the deck was, was six feet before and, and larger. And it, and it's six feet after. So the building got moved back 10 feet and the, and the deck just kind of ran with the building. But as far as the story polls, what I wanted to point out is on the, on the upper left-hand corner of the April 2021 corner, you can see how it's kind of chamfered. Uh, it kind of goes in. And so if you were to take that story poll and compare it to the story poll on the current proposal, I could see how that might get a little bit confusing. However, the story polls, um, that are on the, the, which would be the east side or, or the lower left-hand corner of this exhibit, it should be 10 feet in. That, that has been moved 10 feet in. The plans are 10 feet in. The story polls were certified, inspected to, to be 10 feet in. That's what the plans show.
Well, my question is, number one, the certification doesn't certify where they were placed, just how high they were, but, uh, Commissioner Smith's comment that they looked like they'd only come in two feet. You're saying they should have come in 10 feet, which would put them basically at the glass wall, and they certainly aren't there. But so that's where the confusion comes in. It's not, it's, it's not two feet. It's supposed to be 10 feet in. The deck's supposed to go with the house. They're both six feet. The deck's six feet on both houses, on both versions. So there should be a 10 foot difference in the story polls and there plainly isn't. That's where I'm totally confused and I have a feeling that the story polls are misplaced. Uh, otherwise they would be basically almost to the glass wall or at the glass wall.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I think there's some confusion. This, the, the surveyor mentioned some very specific heights on the poles. He certified that they were horizontally accurate. He felt the need, I think, because they were off by, you know, several inches because they could bend or whatever vertically. So he felt the need to mention the exact heights that he had surveyed. But horizontally, they were, they were right on according to the certi, so there's no, so when you're reading that certification, the note is to specify what he, the exact heights that were surveyed and just felt the need to note that.
He never specified the location and, and what I think our confusion is, according to your plans and according to what Lily said, everything moved back 10 feet, but the story polls didn't.
Well, I think that's a, maybe a, an area of disagreement, but yeah, the, we had them certified three times previously for the previous location. They're spot on now. You can see from our plans, uh, the, the building is clearly going beyond the, the glass rail and just past the adjacent deck. And that's right where the story polls, you know, are located. But the, the certification says that the story polls were put in per the story poll plan. The story poll plan has both vertical and horizontal location. The certification is telling you that they're horizontally correct. He's just placing an additional note on the heights.
So Mr. Wimmer, I'm feeling a little bit insulted here. Um, we understand what the situation is. The pole should have been at the glass wall, period. You moved him in two feet. You're trying to gain an extra eight feet here and trying to tell us, oh, well, well, we moved it back 10 feet. You didn't move it back 10 feet. So that needs to happen. If, in my view, if you want this approved, you'll start the mass at the glass wall. That's it. The debt goes from there out. That's what we asked for you the last meeting, and that's not what's happened. Please don't insult us with saying, oh, well, you know, we got the elevation right. Well, you might've got that right, but you didn't get this right. And I think you're trying to pull that past us. I'm not happy about that.
All right. Are there any more speakers, Kathleen?
No, there are not.
All right, we'll close the public hearing and come back to the commission table. We've got a lot to do tonight. Let's see what, somebody has any inclinations of how you want to proceed with this. Yes, Craig.
Well, yeah, I just had a question. Uh, this is for Trevor, I think. I mean, it seems, I, I agree with Dennis's assessment of that they only came in a few feet. It seems quite clear to me that the polls are wrong because the math sounds reasonably accurate. If they went from 4212 down to 3778, that sounds like the 10 foot change. So the question is, on paper, the polls are part of the application. They're part of what would be approved or not approved. Is there some way to condition it and say the polls are screwy and we can approve it at the 10 foot less that is now approximately at the glass wall? Or, uh, do we need to rely on, on truly accurate polls as part of our determination?
Trevor?
Sure. I, I want to address a few things here. So first is that the planning commission does not tell anyone how to redo their project that's presented here. And there was a suggestion at the last commission meeting that if it was brought in approximately 10 feet, then there may be a path to approval to be able to make the findings here. But the commission itself does not tell anyone that they have to move their project in. Um, in terms of the, the polls, there seems to be a lot of confusion about where those are located. Lily, do we know if moving this, what was the, you know, moving 10 feet back, where that puts in relation to that wall? That wall seems to be the one fixture point that everybody here can understand where it is. And whether, you know, this moved back, you know, whether it did move back or whether it didn't move back, you know, based on that, you know, where that, that fence is located. Because I think that's really causing a lot of confusion here, um, on the project.
Second, Lily answered first, John.
Right, in, in January and March, I did not measure the distance of the story polls from that, the existing glass railing. It didn't occur to me to do that, but I, when I did do a sort of poll inspection with Commissioner Smith on, in July, he did make that measurement and, um, I, I don't, I don't know where the discrepancy is. The, the shape of the house is curved. I, there, it might be just the, the placement of the story polls based on the curvature of the, the proposed residence. Um, but we relied on the project plans when we prepared the staff report. And the story poll inspection occurred, um, about three weeks ago.
Regardless of the, the, do we know where the fence would lie on where those plans are? I mean, there may be an error with this, the story poll. There may not. There seems to be confusion about that. But on the, the diagram of the plans itself, do we know where that existing fence lies within, you know, GPS coordinates of where that would line up with where this house is going to be located?
Um, let me, let me look at that. I'll check.
If, if, if we had a dimensioned site plan, wouldn't you be able to scale off how many feet, say, from the edge of the right of way that, that fence lies? Uh, and then, you know, be able to try to clarify it that way? Just a second. John had his hand up first. I'll go with John.
Yeah, and this is, this is for Trevor while we're thinking about it. The story polls are intended for the public to be able to see what's going on. And so what we've noticed is, some of the planning commissions have noticed that the visual of the story polls doesn't seem to jive with reality. So it's not, who certifies what, who, it's whether or not, and this is a question for you, whether or not the public has the right to have accurate story polls as do we as Commissioners. That's, that's really the question in my mind. I've got several other things I want to bring up, but we'll let Lily, Trevor, deal with that. It's just that when you look at it, it's obviously hasn't moved 10 feet.
All right, David.
Lily, are you, I don't want to interrupt here. I, I, I'm just in really trouble by this process because we, as a commission, suggested, not required, that they go back to the drawing board and come back with a proposal that's 10 feet less than what they presented last time. They've either done that or they haven't done that. It can't be that complicated. For the story polls is a separate issue. We're either looking at plans that are 10 feet less than they were before or were not. So someone needs to tell us which it is. And the, the story, I take John's point. It would be nice to have a story polls to let the public see it. But before we even get to that, I want to know whether they've made the 10 foot adjustment and the two foot adjustment that we asked for before. It says in the staff report that they have.
Well, and to, to David's point, I agree. Then my question was, how, how much weight do the polls carry if we were to approve this? And, and on the one hand, the paper plans show the 10 feet. On, on the other hand, the polls don't. Could they come back and say, well, you guys approved kind of a wishy washy thing and we're going to go with the wide interpretation with the polls? But if we forget about the polls, just go with the, the, what's on paper, then maybe that's more tight.
I think the polls are a visual representation and try to give not only the public, but us an idea of where it is, but we're not approving poll locations. We're approving a set of plans. And, and, and the, the, the polls are icings on a cake, if you want to put it that way. But, but it really doesn't have anything to do with what's legally buildable. Okay, Lily?
Chair Jennings, I, I have to disagree with that. I believe that when they showed where the mass goes, that's what the polls are for, which were on the plans. Now they've come back and tried to just move them back a couple of feet and say they've moved it back 10 feet. Tell us if the mass stops at the glass railing as Commissioner Mazza while and, and he'll have said. And then, then we can have maybe a conversation about approval. Other than that, it's, that's not what we ask them to do. I think they're trying to go around us. And the next thing you know, you walk up out there and the foundation's another seven or eight feet past the glass railing. And who's going to put the red tag on them to tell them to stop?
Okay.
Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Jennings, Chair Jennings is correct that it's the plans that are control what's built. You know, and that it is meant to be a visual guide. And the, the problem here is, you know, there's confusion about whether the polls were put in the right place. Just because there's a picture of the polls being there does not mean that that is the authorization for it to be located there. So I, I think that's what Willie is trying to pull up is whether, you know, where that line is.
Yeah, but aren't we making a, a variance here? And that variance is up to us to have a clear idea of why we're changing these lines. And if we don't have a clear idea of why we're changing these lines, I don't know how we can make a finding. If it's just, just, well, trust me, it's on a piece of paper. This is an ocean front and it either blocks other people's views or it doesn't. And we can't determine that by having some mental capacity to, to do 3D visualization. Uh, I can't do that personally.
But John, if Lily can do it, an overlay that shows the plan on the site and that it actually aligns with the glass wall, that would be sufficient, right?
Maybe if the glass wall, I, I've never studied the glass wall as a visual line.
So Mr. Wimmer had a plan, if you guys remember, he had it in a brown overlay, right? And in that one plan that he showed, it went past, the mass went past the glass railing. That's on his plan. So if we could find that file or that exhibit again, uh, his exhibit, that would show you guys what I'm trying to say here, what we're all probably trying to say.
Can we pull that up?
I, I can point out on, in the agenda report packet on page 58 of the PDF, there is a, a survey. It's, um, it is sheet one of the survey that I shows a five foot high wood fence along the rear of the property and, uh, please, Dustin, correct me if I'm wrong, if you can. That five foot high wood fence indicates the glass railing that we're discussing now. And a measurement from that fence to the originally proposed um, rear string line is about 18 feet.
That's correct. It's actually, we measured 19. So the original house was 19 feet from the glass railing. We moved it in 10 feet. It's now, depending, it's not parallel, but it's about eight or nine feet from the glass railing currently as proposed.
That's what I'm measuring as well.
Mr. Wimmer, was that including the deck?
No.
Okay, there's, there's no way any of this is adding up. There's no way.
If you look at our exhibit that we, that building comparison exhibit, it has that nice aerial overlay and it's, it's a little bit easier to see what's existing in, in the string line, how it overlays on some of the existing improvements.
Can you bring that up, Lily? Or Alex or somebody?
That'd be his last slide.
So you can see on this exhibit, this is the same exhibit, just with the new dimensions on it that we presented back in April to the planning commission. You can see the green line was the previous, um, string line. The purple line is the new proposed string line. Just inside the purple line, about, you know, exactly eight or nine feet, you can see like, uh, what is the, uh, glass railing, as we're calling it, which is another, you know, eight or nine feet further in. This has been the same exhibit we've been using throughout the process. It's also consistent. It's just a little, little easier to visualize. But it's the same information that's on our, um, plan some of those.
So Mr. Wimmer, I'm not seeing any of that when we were out there. Wherever the green line is, I, I don't remember any polls being 20 feet out past. There's no way.
Yeah, and if you, if you look at attachment three, I'm looking on paper. I don't know the PDF number, but it shows the polls from March this year and, and they're approximately 10 feet from the, the glass wall. I mean, maybe 12, but they're not 20 or something. It's about 10 feet. So, you know, bring them in 10 feet, you're at or close to the glass wall.
But they aren't there.
But they're not there. So in other words, I think we're made, we're sort of being told at the same time that the polls were wrong in the first instance.
All right, so when do we have Mr. Warmer's slide, that that overlay that had the brown overlay of the of the of the subject property? I think it was maybe the next.
Might be, oh, it's big foot, there you go. Wait, back, back. There you go. You can see where the glass railing has the lines there, the mass is past that.
Does that include the deck or is that just the house?
That's the house. The deck's kind of in a lighter gray beyond it, but the house is in brown.
Oh, I see the bit of gray on the legend.
Yeah, so that's farther than it looks.
Yeah.
In reality. Our story poll wise.
Correct.
Yeah, it's still a bit far.
All right.
I have some other questions.
Let's, let's, yes, John.
I wanted to get, you know, we got like 100 emails from the bicycle people. I wanted to to ask about that a little. It appears yeah, that I if somebody can put up their first floor, I can explain it, but it appears that the parking that we're giving a variance, a 12 foot setback. Cars aren't 12 feet long. So it appears that the cars will be in the roadway. Yeah, the standard, I think, parking space, the small ones are 18 and the big ones are 20. But it looks to me like the average car is going to be four feet into the roadway. And we got all these letters about how dangerous it is to be going down the roadway, I think they called it the door opening zone or something. Along the highway, we have obstructions in the roadway. So I'm wondering, I'm talking about public safety here and long run consistency of the highway, because another issue we have tonight is, again, bicycle lanes. Can we give a variance? And I'm, I don't know, you know, we can obviously do anything we want, but can we give a variance that creates a public danger? And can we say, okay, you got three or four parking spaces when you really don't? Because cars aren't that small. Like maybe I guess you drive a Volkswagen, but there aren't too many of them around. So I'm wondering why we shouldn't have first floor, not second floor setback fit our compact space, which is 18 feet. Because I I don't think we as a city have the right to impinge on Caltrans right away. Uh, which is what we're doing. And that's a question for, I guess, Trevor or or Richard.
Well, well, let's, let's let's stick with where we're going and and try to get some shape into this discussion. We need to move on at some point. Everybody seems to have a little bit of confusion and concern. But let's, let's see if we can get some sort of a yes, Trevor.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, we we should look at the findings here on the variance and the variance, the second finding is that it won't be detrimental to the public interest or safety. So if you saw that would be an issue, it would be that. But I want to clarify for the record that these 100 emails are from the cyclist is not for this project. That is not part of the record here. Maza, you're you're just talking about that there'd be, you you're interested in whether there's a, an issue, a safety issue from the location here for the parking outside and people being able to pass.
Yeah, and encroachment on Caltrans right away. Uh, I had, I had one other question though, Jeff, I want to bring up. I could find nowhere in the report where the the elevation from the center line of the highway was. And again, this is the 10th beachfront house in a row where we have an exactly flat front of the house, flat floor, no 50% drop down. It's just, all these numbers never add up to to 10 in a row. We haven't approved a 50% drop down in a house in probably a year. So I'm questioning that number, especially when this house is almost 50 feet above the beach. It's a five story building. That's a big change for a lot of male.
Okay, can we get? Somebody want to try to form a motion? Yes, Craig.
I I'll mention two other things first. I think we're heading towards sending them back to draw a plan that conforms substantially with the glass wall. Whatever the story polls may or may not have shown in the past, that 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 wall seems to be the target we're looking at.
Okay, just let me remind you what Trevor said, that it's not our job to tell them to go back and do anything. Our job is to, is our job is to.
But once we have said we're not going with the nominally required string line and that we're giving a variance, then it's our discretion and judgment to give a sense of where that string line should lay.
I don't think that's correct. I think we have a choice here of passing it, denying it, or the applicant has to, can request a continuance.
Yeah, you're right.
And in that case, I'm going to make a motion for denial on the fact that we cannot make the the findings, given the evidence we've been presented.
I, I have. Hold on just a second, Trevor.
Okay, I was going to suggest that you that you, if you want to do a straw poll about there's three variances requested, it seemed to be the issue here. And whether you're able to make the findings for those three variances.
I think that would be a good idea. Let's just do it on a straw poll. John, you, you, your motion was, or started to be, that you couldn't make the findings on any of the three variances. Is that right?
Uh, let me make sure I have the three variances here. I know I can't make, for public safety reasons, I cannot make the mo, the variant, the variance for front yard setback.
Right.
Floor. I can't make the variance for the string line without evidence. And what was the third one?
You have a, you have a building string line and a deck string line variance.
Two, two.
Both of those. I also, I also cannot make the variance that we are following the code on elevation.
On what?
Elevation of the structure.
Oh, 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 all right.
It's over.
So, so we're doing a, we're doing a straw vote so that we can give some guidance to the applicant as to what they want to do, whether they want to get a denial or whether they want to come back and try to redesign again. Craig?
Point of clarification on the, on the front yard setback. John, they they have it set up here so that one of the exterior cars parked is inset towards the beach some. And that's the last time, that's why we're talking about if we could move it a few feet, that would give them enough turning radius to back out into the shoulder. And I think we're pretty close on that. What the other out, uh, exterior car space is parallel to the highway. It's not set up so that they're backing out or sticking out into the highway, so.
As long as it's not on the highway, but again, we.
No, it's not debated, we're just.
No, no, I'm just saying there, we're asking for, they're asking for a variance for 12 feet. One of the cars gotta be 12 feet long.
Right, John.
That's why I'm saying.
You can't, you can't make the findings on the public safety, Craig saying, you're pretty close. Okay, now, how do you feel on the, on the string line, Craig?
Um, I, I, I don't like where they're at. I also want to point out that they've got a returns wall on the seawall. An extra little piece of the seawall that seems designed entirely to protect the staircase. And it's, it's basically a groin. It's a groin and that's going to set up problems with sand distribution on the beach. And the stairs are are supposed to be breakaway anyway. So they don't, there's no business having that return seawall on them.
Yeah, well, your comments may be useful to them, should they choose to come back. David?
I, I, I'm sorry, and I don't mean to take more time, but I'm really troubled by this process. We sent them away last time with a set of things we wanted them to do. The report says they did it. So one of two things is true. Either the report is wrong that we rely on for our information, or they didn't do it. And I don't understand which of those two things is the case. Cause I, I, we've got to be consistent as a group. And if we ask them to do something and they did it, and now we're criticizing them. I agree, that doesn't look right with the wall, but it says right here, they've moved it 10 feet landward from the originally proposed string line. So which is it?
Well, there's a difference in, and and I disagree with your premise. We did not tell them how to design their house.
No, we made a suggestion.
We made a suggestion. They came back with a plan that is their plan. And it's a de novo hearing, we are supposed to consider the plan in front of us. Okay, we didn't say last time, if you do this, we'll pass it.
We certainly implied that.
You can imply all you want until you vote.
Okay.
On the project in front of you, it's, it's not legal.
What we're trying to do is get a a straw vote on these issues. David, you seem to be undecided on that. Dennis, I have a feeling from what you said that you can't make the variance findings on the string line. How do you feel about this? How do you feel about the the front yard setback?
The front yard doesn't bother me as much. You know, Commissioner Hill, when our very first visit, he, all of us looked at that, we, well, the two of us. And so I think, I think it was a good call. I think the 12 feet should work. If they're going to pull in parallel to the garage door, I don't know Commissioner Maz, if they're actually going to pull in head. I believe they're going to have to pull in parallel and otherwise I think they're, they know they're going to get creamed if they try and back in and out of that situation. So the 12 foot, they gave us an extra couple of feet. I can, I can go with that.
Yeah, I, I gotta, I gotta go with. Personally, I gotta go with David in a little bit on, on, on this whole thing. And I was, I was, I was troubled by it because I I had actually prepared a diagram saying, you know, in terms of the string line, this is what I could go with. And but I have no ability to reference this current plan to what I said I could go with. And so I'm, I'm, I'm having a difficult time supporting it. So, uh, having said those things, giving our comments like that, can you open up, uh, Mr.? Mr. Wimmer's, Wimmer's microphone.
He has her hand up, maybe she can provide some information about, uh, what you and Commissioner Wilder are looking for.
Lily, you said had her hand up?
Yes.
I didn't see it. Raise your hand, Lily. Okay.
I just wanted to note for the front yard setback, the first, the first floor setback actually does comply. The required setback is 12 feet. And, and so that complies, the the variance for the front yard setback is for the second story, not for the first story.
Right, right. Uh, and can you help us out on the, uh, the other aspect of it? The, the string line, the seaward string line.
We, we relied on the project plans to measure the, the difference between the previous proposal and and the current proposal, and there is a 10 foot difference. I can't explain the confusion with the story polls. But we did rely on this project plans when we prepared the staff report and our recommendation.
Well, there is a fundamental problem here because no matter what the plans say, we can't, we can't translate it onto the ground unless we had a site plan with a dimensioned site plan showing the current, uh, features that are on the property. If we had that, we'd have at least a, at least a shot at trying to figure out what it is we want, we're able to approve. But short, short of that, we're in trouble.
Steph could bring that back, you know, or the applicant could bring the information back, it'd be another alternative for you besides redesign.
Right, so what I'm trying to do here is to get to Mr. Wimmer.
Yes, I'm unmuted.
There you go. So you've heard, you've heard the sentiment. What's your pleasure? We can take a vote tonight, we can, we can, we can rule on, on this application or you can ask that the matter be continued and brought back to try to resolve some of these issues that are troubling us. What's your pleasure, the pleasure of your client?
I'd like to, I'd like the commission to consider, consider one other option, which would be to provide a condition of approval opposed to, what, what are the issues with redesign is, is obviously maybe there was some confusion, whatever it is, but we went and did what we thought the commission wanted, came back and now we're having a, you know, a whole new hearing, we did story polls redesign, there's a huge effort and, and, you know, months of time goes in between. But if the commission were willing, if the commission were willing to condition the project, I think the, we are willing to go to the rail, which I think everybody understands where that's at physically. But we, our preference would be to just make it a condition of approval that we do so, so we don't have to go back through the whole kind of redesign effort and be back in front of the commission three, four months from now and considering the whole project again with all these other issues potentially that are brought up that weren't, you know, brought up as issues for us to address last time. So if that was an option that was for us, uh, that might.
How would you, how would you feel about, how would you feel about resubmitting to us with a dimensioned site plan showing current improvements on the property, uh, located on the property? In other words, the glass wall and so on and so on. Whether that, that, which, which might try and give us a little bit of a handle to be able to make a decision one way or another. Would you, does that, does that strike your fancy at all?
We, that's on our plans. So like I think Lily was pointing out on our survey, you can see our string line, you can see the glass rail. I think she was measuring, that's what she was measuring from, that she got about 18 feet. That information's on the plans, they've been on the plans. Maybe it could have been more legible or or whatnot, I can't say, but the information is, is on the plans and it's been consistent. And I didn't mean to be disrespectful to Commissioner Smith. But as far as the story poll part, I know the plans very well. And the plans have been moved back, the string line has been moved back 10 feet, um, which is the direction. So if there was, I, I really can't explain the story polls, but if there was a, you know, a misunderstanding there, or maybe they were done wrong, they were all certified by, uh, surveyors. But I, I definitely looked at the story polls this last time and I've seen all the plans as they've gone, uh, through the process. And in this plan, this project was revised to move the project in 10 feet seaward.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take that as a no, you're not interested in all alternative. John?
I could find nowhere on the plans where the bill, building heights were referenced to what the, the municipal code requires, nowhere. And that's a requirement we have to make.
I think that's, I think that's an issue that's more of a concern to you than than many of the other commissioners.
Well, we have to, we as, as individuals have to make a finding that that this follows the municipal code.
Right, and now.
Without any information, we can't make that finding.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Wimmer, uh, didn't indicate really a desire to to redesign or come back. So let's, let's see if we can craft a motion that will get a majority support so that we can get something else done tonight.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we deny on the same motion I made before.
Say again, John, I'm sorry, I can't.
Okay, that I can't make findings one, two or three. And I'm willing to for a second or drop one of those conditions, but, uh, which is the front yard setback. I think it's a public health and safety item. I will eliminate that one if I can get a second, otherwise somebody else can make a motion.
I'll second that with, with the 12 foot exemption. So the other two, I go with that, the string lines.
All right, so you will second it if John will, will abandon this motion.
I'll accept it.
All right, so the motion then is to deny based upon inability to make the findings on the two string line variances. Trevor, you have a draft, your hand up?
Yeah, so if, if, if that's where we're going, then is the direction then to return with a, with a, with a with a motion, with a resolution denying the project for failure to make where to specify the, but basically the variance findings for the two string lines. And then also then it would be the first finding for the coastal development permit, which requires compliance with the LIP. If there's no variance and there's no compliance with that. Can you specify which of the variance findings? You, your, your motion is saying that you are unable to make. We can go through them if that's helpful.
Well, the two string lines.
Yes.
Also, and then you're, you're, you're including in that motion, we can't make the findings that it follows the LIP. I also want to include the MMC.
And, uh, John, the, the specific findings, you want to, can you call out specific findings that you feel you're not able to make?
I'm finding for those variants.
The two findings for the variants, you tell me where they are and I'll read their numbers.
It's 13.26.5. The first is there are special circumstances or exceptional characteristics applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location or surroundings, that strict applications only deprives the property of privileges enjoyed by the other properties in the vicinity under identical zoning classification.
that strict applications only deprives the property of privileges enjoyed by the other properties in the vicinity under identical zoning classification. Can you make that finding?
No.
The second one, the granting of such variance will not be detrimental to the public interest, safety, health, or welfare, and will not be detrimental or injurious to the property or improvements in the same vicinity and zones in which the property is located. Can you make that?
I haven't done that one either.
The granting of the variants will not constitute a special privilege to the applicant or the property owner. Can you make that finding?
No. Now Dennis, I don't know which one of those three you didn't like, but which one it was.
Let me keep going. Next one is the granting of the variants will not be contrary or in conflict with the general purposes and intent of this chapter, nor the goals, objectives, and policies elsewhere. Can you make that finding?
No.
The next one is for Esche. We don't have Esche here, correct, Richard? So that would apply.
Oh, we do. Technically, a beach is Esche, but we'll forget that.
The one after that would be for variances of string line standards, the project provides maximum feasible protection to public access as required by Chapter 12 of the LIP. Can you make that finding?
Yeah, yes, I guess, because they gave a front easement.
Okay. The next one is the variance is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zones in which the site is located. A variance will not be granted for a use activity which is not otherwise expressly authorized by the zone regu- zone regulation governing the parts of the property. Can you make that finding?
No. I want Dennis to step up and see if, you know, if he sees.
John, it's a residential property in its own residential.
Okay, yes.
I can make that, okay. Next one is the, is the subject site physically suitable to the proposed variance?
The front yard variance, no.
No, this is for the string line.
Just the, these are the two string line variances we're talking about, John.
Right, the front string line variance, I can't make.
The rear, but okay.
Rear, yeah, the rear.
Okay. The, the variance complies with all requirements of state and local law?
No.
And a variance will not be granted. It's, the next one's about, last one's about public parking that wouldn't apply. Okay. So the, the motion then would be to return with a resolution denying the application for the failure to make those findings for both the, the deck and the building string line. And also the inability to make the first finding required for the coastal development permit. Does that accurately reflect your motion and your second?
Yes, it does. Well, second, I can't speak.
Yes.
Okay, so Trevor, are you keeping the 12 foot? That's okay? Did John say yes or no to that? Because the way it was, you have to word it.
This is, the motion is, is going to be to return with a resolution denying it because you can't make the string line variance requests for the, for the, the deck and for the building. It is not, it, it would make the, it was not based on the, the variance for the front yard.
I second it.
Go ahead.
The two, two sections, I'm not sure either one or the other might apply with respect to the groin that's being put on the beach in this plan. That would either not make finding F regarding hazards, geologic flood, et cetera, or possibly G shoreline, the project is designed as the least environmentally damaging environment. If you've got a
I'll accept that.
Differential sand distribution and side scour and all that kind of stuff. You don't need that wall there.
I'll accept that.
So you're saying that would be an additional basis for your inability to make the first finding for the coastal development permit that it's in compliance with the LIP? Is that correct?
Correct.
And it's a, is the seconder accepting this?
I am. I second that.
Okay.
All right, we've moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Here we none. Let's call the roll, please, Kathleen.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wilde?
Stain.
Mayor Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that concludes item 4A. It's let's see if we can get more, one more down here. While we take a break. Item 4B is the coastal development permit for the project 27493 Calicut Road. Go to staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The next item on the agenda is coastal development permit number 17-111 for a project located at 27493 Calicut Road. Next slide, please. The subject project property is located in the residential neighborhood at the northern city boundary in the rural residential 20 acre zoning district at 27493 Calicut Road. Next slide, please. The recorded track map includes a private driveway and a fire lane that was proposed to traverse lot 18 and lot 19, which was abandoned and never constructed. The figure shows the private driveway and fire lane on the recorded track map. Shown in yellow is the subject parcel, lot 19. Shown in green is the adjacent parcel, lot 18, as shown, and shown in red is the private driveway and fire lane. There is also an associated 10 foot utility easement to the left of the red outline. Next slide, please. This aerial image shows the existing development on site. The existing swimming pool was built and final by building and safety on October 15, 2001 over the existing private driveway and fire lane that was proposed to traverse lot 18 and lot 19, which was abandoned and never constructed. The proposed swimming pool will be located in the same general area, will be expanded, and have a rectangular shape. Next slide, please. The abandoned alignment area within lots 18 and 19 was used for grading during construction of the subdivision, including the creation of transition slopes and the, and the locating of sub drains to create a building paths, a lot 18, a lot 19, and allow for the creation of accessible cul-de-sac. There's a steep low slope and considerable grade difference between lots 18 and 19, and the cul-de-sac down below, which means no access to traverses deep topography. The subdivision construction that took place within the abandoned alignment further rendered the area inaccessible and not of general use. Additionally, the area developed with this swimming pool on lot 19 is also not accessible and managed and maintained solely by the property owner. Next slide, please. Coastal development permit 17111, the scope of working is for an interior and exterior remodel. A new swimming pool spa measuring 18 feet wide by 82 feet long, associated pool equipment to be fully screened, new 3,303 square foot of impermeable decking, relocate garage doors resulting in less than 10% exterior demolition, removal of 6,160 square feet of hardscape, including the removal of the semicircular driveway, new 1,601 square feet of concrete driveway, new 954 square feet of permeable pavers, and new 1,330 square feet of brass, and exempt grading. Next slide, please. Here we have the site plan and I just wanted to point out the, the swimming pool to the top of the slide. To the left of that, we have some decking. And at the bottom, you see the new driveway. So they're removing the semicircular drive, driveway and including this, this more straight access into the garage doors that are being relocated. Currently, there is a car Porsche where the cars driving through the semicircular driveway and access through the garage at the back of the garage. Now they're putting it towards the, facing the street. And to the left of the garage, we have a pool equipment enclosure that's existing and no, no proposed changes are proposed there. Next slide, please. In summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a solution number 21-50, approving the proposed project as condition. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and staff are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, so the scotters, please. John?
Yes, I talked to Richard today. I did not visit the project. I pointed out that in the resolution number 30 says that there's no landscaping and no landscaping plan is required, but in the project description, there is landscaping. So that's the only thing I brought up.
David?
This is the site, met with Matt Jewitt, discussed the right away issues, but nothing that isn't reflected in the report.
Dennis?
Commissioner Hill and I had a conversation just about that exact same thing. And Mr. Jewitt did call me back today and let me know the same thing Commissioner Wilde just said about the, about the easement and utilities, which is in the staff report.
Craig?
I met with Mr. Jewitt on site. Learned that they're not particularly concerned about the GTE easement for reasons I guess we'll get into. I had some questions for Planner Mario about the impermeable stuff and you guys were all made party to my questions in a way that I think was not appropriate and will not happen again. Hopefully. He pointed out that the impermeable coverage is 24,000 something, and that seems pretty close and might deserve some conversation. Also, the plans point out that the port co-chair is to be enclosed. And he said, no, that's no longer the plan. But that raised the question to me about how close we were to the TDSF limit. I still don't have an answer to that, but I suppose the condition might be to say that that can't be enclosed. And then finally, because I, I was curious about what the deed restriction was and why there, why it was not specified in the staff report. And I looked on the tax assessor's website and saw that because there's an open space restriction, the net lot size is 1.78 acres, which is different from what staff reported to me. They've reported something bigger. So there's some, some discrepancy about what the lot, net lot it would be, and then therefore what the TDSF would be. Okay, that's all I got.
Yeah, nothing for me since the last time that was before. Questions for staff?
Chair Jennings, I just want to clarify for the record that Commissioner Hill is referencing, he had questions to staff that were circulated to everyone. That was also available to the public. So that was, that was the issue.
Right, right.
But that should not have happened, correct? That should have just been me between me and staff.
Yes, but, yes, it was out there. So I was gonna, so there was no mystery. That's.
Right, 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 right.
Okay. Let's who've we got to for the for the applicant team?
Uh, Matt Jewitt will be speaking on behalf of the applicant.
He's the only one?
Yes.
Do we have other listed speakers?
We do not.
Okay. Mr. George, you've got 15 minutes.
All right, can you guys hear me okay?
Uh huh.
Oh, did not hear me. Okay, you can't. Great. Can I get my presentation pulled up? All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Jewitt, Keystone Strategic Planning, representing the applicant. Next slide, please. All right, here's the site and the existing conditions as laid out by staff pretty well. Next slide, please. There's the existing westerly driveway. West of the house, there is the private driveway and fire lane that was originally recorded on the track map where the pool was approved and located by the City of Malibu and Coastal Commission in 2000 and constructed in 2001. Next slide, please. So by way of background, there was the 1990 track map approved by the California Coastal Commission and vesting track map that was recorded in March of 1991. Next, please. There's the track map and the 40 foot wide private driveway and fire lane, also referred to as Calicut Road on the map. Next slide, please. During the grading review process for construction subdivision paths, modifications were made to the anticipated building site for lot 19, which is the subject property due to geotechnical conditions encountered, which triggered some project provisions after the original track map was approved. Next slide, please. Here's the revised Geo report. Next slide. And the proposed project was revised to relocate lot 19 from the west of the east, west of the east ridge flank within the northernmost limited construction. The property boundaries and grading were revised to form a common property line separating lots 18 and 19 with access via private driveway, which is the existing western extension, western easement, extending north from the cul-de-sac terminus of Calicut Road. It effectively shortened the previous private driveway and fire lane to terminate in that roundabout that staff had pointed out earlier. Next slide, please. Additionally, they required two to one fill slopes on the southeast side of the pad, which effectively blocked access from the private driveway and fire lane. Next slide, please. Here's the visual representation from that final geology report with the project provisions showing the terminus of Calicut Road, private driveway and fire lane, where the two to one fill slope is that blocked off the previously identified driveway and fire lane, and then changing where the fire lane used to come up along there to a common property line. Next slide, please. Subsequent to the Geo, changes that were made, Coastal Commission approved final grading and construction. And then they also approved construction of the residence and the pool in their current location via their respective CDPs. Next slide, please. The coastal staff report provides a little background where the project was cited on a previously constructed and graded pad. The building pad was constructed on compacted fill slopes on the south trending ridge line that descends towards the south and east at a two to one gradient. That's the manufactured fill slope that cut off the private driveway and fire lane in the east. To the west, on the opposite side of the driveway, the property slopes two to one across natural slopes towards Escamio Canyon. Next slide, please. Uh, next slide. So this basically just shows the layout of what coastal approved with the original subdivision tract grading and how they laid it out when they approved the house. Next slide. Next slide. So easements had come up as an issue with the original recordation of the track map. There were easements that were recorded in tandem in 1991. There were two major ones. And happy to discuss this with you guys later. Regarding the GTE easement, it is and was a non-exclusive easement within the easement document itself. There are no restrictions on the grantor, i.e. the property owner, for development of anything within those easements. Next slide, please. Shows it's a non-exclusive easement. Also, the linkage for the GTE easement is tied to the alignment of the private and private driveway and fire lane. There are references to other meets and bounds, but this easement was recorded for all 19 parcels. So you'll see throughout, it will have a meets and bounds for lot four, lot 13, lot 12. There is no meets and bounds for lot 19. It is tied to the private driveway and fire lane. And there are no restrictions specified on what the grantor can do with the property except maintaining and allowing access to the grantee, which in this case was GTE. Next slide, please. Then there was an SCE easement. Next slide. Also tied to the private driveway and fire lane. This was also recorded for the entirety of the 19 lots. And it makes reference to a separate description for lot two and a lot eleven, and lot 11. But lot 19, it was also tied to the private driveway and fire lane. Next slide, please. With the relocation of the access road due to the geotechnical issues, there were 1996 access and utility easements that were recorded to the west there that provide current access to the subject property and also to the neighbor, neighboring property to the, to the north in unincorporated LA County. Next slide, please. There's the easements for ingress, egress and utilities. And that shows the alignment of the current westerly driveway and also where the former private driveway and fire lane was on the track map. Next slide, please. In 1997, a declaration of notice addressed the termination of the private driveway and fire lane between lots 18 and 19. Next slide, please. Uh, next slide, please. Portion of said land designated as private driveway and fire lane as shown on the map of said track line within those portions of lot 18 and 19. A driveway and private easement has been constructed and exists over and along another, other portions of lot 18 and 19, which would include the westerly route, thereby eliminating the need for the here and, here before mentioned private driveway and fire lane. The private driveway and fire lane is not currently in use and there is no intent to utilize said land as such or convey those rights to others. It is the desire of said owner to eliminate and relinquish any rights to all said private driveway private, private driveway and fire lane. Since the undersigned owners owns all of the lots shown on the map of said tract, it alone has the right to terminate the proposed use or future use for the driveway and or fire lane purposes. Therefore, the strip of land described herein is hereby terminated as to use or future use with all said rights in and to said strip, strip being permanently relinquished. It is the intent of the undersigned, this declaration of notice serves as constructive notice that said strip is removed as an encumbrance from said lot 18 and 19 of the tract and this notice is binding on all future owners of said land. Next slide, please. So that was recorded in 2007. Applications were submitted for a plot plan review with the city in 19. Applications were submitted for plot plan review with the city in 1999, which was approved in 2000. Coastal approved the house and the pool in its current location in 2000, 2001. Building permits were pulled and construction began and in 2001, a new SCE easement was recorded. Next slide. Next slide, please. In the legal description for SCE, it's for a six-foot strip of land lying easterly of parallel, adjacent and concentric to that private street, 26 feet in width, which is the Westerly Road known as Calcut Road and importantly, as currently established to distinguish it from the previous private driveway and fire lane. Next slide, please. In 2001, the precedent appears that all legal and physical access, utility and developed rights were established, approved and recorded by required city, county and state authorities. However, any subsequent questions, points of confusion or errors do also appear to be covered under the Davis Sterling Act. Next slide, please. The Malibu Pacifica HOA, which governs the neighborhood specifies that the areas identified as private driveway and fire lanes on the original tract are considered common maintenance areas for the benefit of the HOA. Next slide, please. Here's the definition from the CCNRs, which includes all those portions of the tract designated as private driveway and fire lane. Next slide, please. So Davis Sterling Act provides explicit guidance where the HOA has exclusive authority to grant exclusive private use of common areas if certain circumstances apply. For this case, subject circumstances meet four of the criteria where only one is required. The first one is to eliminate or correct, correct engineering record errors in documents recorded with the county recorder or on file with a public agency or utility company. This situation does make that requirement because the original plan was unbuildable pursuant to county building standards and was redesigned and constructed to meet county requirements. Earlier, the approved conceptual alignment, or the earlier conceptual alignment is in conflict with the grading plan approved by both the county and Coastal Commission. This is an error pursuant to this exception that Davis Sterling anticipates and allows to be corrected with approval from the HOA. Next slide. Exception two is to permit changes of the plan due to changed circumstances that are a result of topography, obstruction, hardship, aesthetic considerations and environmental conditions. These were the geology conditions that were encountered after the recordation of the map and is a change that Davis Sterling anticipates and allows to be, changes to be made with approval from the HOA. Next slide, please. Third one is to fulfill the requirements of a public agency. It appears that the original subdividers were following the lead of the county and the geology requirements and making modifications in accordance with both county and coastal approvals. And this is the fulfillment of public agency requirements that Davis Sterling anticipates and allows with approval from the HOA. Next slide, please. Lastly, to transfer the burden of management and maintenance of any common area that is generally inaccessible and not of general use to the membership at large of the association. The private driveway and fire lane, as discussed, is explicitly called out as a common maintenance area or a common area. As built and required by the county, the private driveway and fire lane was cut short and a two-to-one fill slope was constructed blocking access. As a result, the area contained within the abandoned portion of the private driveway and fire lane is generally inaccessible as common area and not of general use to the membership at large and would otherwise create a burden of management and maintenance. This is a burden that Davis Sterling anticipates and allows to be alleviated with approval from the HOA. Next slide, please. These are just a couple of photos showing the two-to-one slope that blocks access from the previously mapped private driveway. Next slide, please. We have been working with the HOA and their architectural committee has reviewed the plans and provided approval. Next slide, please. Next slide, the HOA also did provide a letter, a more detailed letter as we got more involved working things out with staff. To summarize the information provided below, the HOA has reviewed and approved the members' project as required by the CCNRs. The existing improvements on the subject lot were constructed solely by the lot owner and are maintained exclusively by the lot owner. It is recognized that the existing and proposed improvements are located within an area on the subject lot identified as private driveway and fire lane on the original track map and that this area is referred to as a common area in the CCNRs. The owner of the subject lot has exercised and continues to maintain exclusive use and maintenance obligations over this abandoned common area since the time the subject lot was developed. We have this addresses all outstanding matters with the city so that you may continue with your project. Next slide, please. Project description, staff covered this well. Next slide. There's a reduction in our total impermeable surface coverage from what was previously approved. Next slide. Next slide. Our numbers come from the original 2000 City of Malibu approval where 11,968 square feet was approved. At the time, that did not include the access easement and driveway that serves the neighboring prop, a good chunk of that serves the neighboring property as well beyond our driveway to the garage. We can, next slide, please. Garage doors getting flipped around from the back going into the portico share to clarify. No work is proposed beneath the portico share. That can be discussed, but to clarify and confirm, that is absolutely not being proposed or approved as part of this application. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, there we go. There's a picture of it. Next slide. All right, in conclusion, the private driveway and fire lane was legally abandoned in 1997 and recorded with the county. All existing development was constructed legally with appropriate city and coastal approvals as well as utility easement provisions in 2001. All potential errors, points of confusion and or corrections are considered, contemplated, allowed for and fulfilled under Davis Sterling as an HOA matter, which has been sufficiently addressed and approved in accordance with Davis Sterling by the HOA. Impermeable surface coverage has been reduced and the project has been plan checked and approved by building and safety, heading, planning, approval. Next slide, please. Property owner simply sought to replace and update a legally established pool that didn't work as well as it used to and make garage access make more, make more sense and be more convenient. There are no adverse impacts to any coastal resources or the community and the HOA has expressed strong support for the property owner repeatedly in writing. There are no objections or opposition from anyone. All bases are covered with regards to the removal and relocation of the easements and the property has been served by the requisite utility providers for 20 years. The common maintenance area was recorded as abandoned with the county in 1997 and the HOA has reiterated this position in association with this application. The applicant, applicant has got everything in their power to satisfy any and every potential concern the city may have regarding these private easements. And there have been no issues for the last 20 years because it appears that everything was resolved before the pool was originally approved in 2000 and constructed in 2001. And there are no foreseeable issues moving forward based on the information obtained and presented. The no project alternative does nothing to alleviate any potential concerns because the existing pool would remain in the same location as proposed pool, except that it would leave the owner unable to repair or replace or use the pool the city legally permitted. Therefore, we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewett. Kathleen, there are no other speakers?
No, sir, there are not.
All right, we're back at the commission table then. Who would like to start? Craig?
A question for Trevor. On the, the, the utility easement, in particular, the GTE one on the, the portion on the east side of the house. There's been a point made that it's okay because it's not exclusive, but it would, my understanding be correct, that that just means that they can share that easement with others like SCE, for example, but it doesn't mean that they can be told, no, you can't put something here because the owner's already got a pool here.
The issue with the exclusive part of that is if you do something, they would obstruct you from being able to use, you know, what you, the purpose of the easement is for, then you would have a problem. But there's nothing here, number one, to indicate that it can't, you know, especially with a phone line, that it can't be located underneath, farther underneath. And they're also, you know, as we all know, you know, there is an easement for this. It's, it's running, you know, right next to us, so there's probably no.
Okay, that, okay. What, what I see, I see a lot of support for why the easements were moved to the west and why that makes sense. And I think like the Davis Sterling Act speaks to that, that there were reasons why it wasn't good to have it on the east and now, so we have a good rationale for why there's one on the west. The declaration of notice basically is the homeowner and successors extinguishing or expressing their desire to extinguish their own claims on that easement, the old easement. What, what, what I feel is still missing is the formal extinguishment by and with the county recorder of those old easements. And to what you just said, your point, the hypothetical is we, we don't know what might come in the future, but what if the neighbor to the southeast says five years from now, hey, Frontier has this new super hyper holographic video thing and it requires a new fatter cable and the only way to get it to my house is to bring it through that easement that's underneath your pool. And it seems to me like this should be extinguished. And even with the case of the, the Edison easement, I don't know that it's necessarily sufficient. And you, you can say that they have, have a letter from one guy in one office saying, yeah, we're never going to need that again. Doesn't that still need to be formally extinguished at the county recorder?
Yes, the easements still exist until they're extinguished and that they've been told that that is, you know, the best way to, you know, take care of this. But in this case, especially with the SCE, you know, they're, they're going to have an estoppel issue with, you know, what their, their person has put out here about that easement. And on top of that, it's not clear that they can't just run it, you know, deeper underneath. There may be a civil matter, you know, down the road about this, that they say that they are obstructing that easement. But, you know, what's been presented so far, I would say would give you a basis to say that they have the right to put this pool in here and that it's not necessarily incompatible with, you know, those easement rights there, especially in light of the fact that, you know, these exact utility easements are running, you know, you know, very close in, you know, to where this is. And this was, you know, basically a mistake that was not cleaned up properly a long time ago.
John?
But, and also just to say though, it seems like it would be a relatively simple housekeeping matter to say, when I, when I, when I spoke to Mr. Jewett about it, he said, well, you know, we have to sue and the homeowners and it'd be this big complicated thing. To me, it seems like this is basically a declaratory judgment. There's nothing adversarial. Everybody just goes down and says, let's extinguish this easement.
Well, they, they could have done that with the, with the HOA, but it is an expensive process, but it's not necessary, you know, based under, you know, like the Davis Sterling proportions that we, you know, just went through there. You don't need to fully extinguish it in order to be able to, you know, do what they did here to basically grant the exclusive use here to the property. The utility easements are, are different, you know, like we said, and, you know, the, the SCE one's probably more troubling than the GTE one, but then they have the letter, you know, from them, you know, they recommended to go through the process. They probably would have saved them time if they had gone through it to formally have those removed by the utilities. But, you know, as analyzed here, there's, you know, there's enough for this commission to find that, you know, they could run those utilities farther underneath if they ever need to, or that they, you know, have provided enough here, especially with SCE, that they have said that, you know, they don't need those rights and they can be, there's no objection to the project from them.
Am I wrong that Davis Sterling just provides the authority and the, and the basis for creating the new easement pathways because there was a problem with the old one, but it doesn't necessarily extinguish the old ones in any way?
Doesn't, it's, it's still on the, the books there, but it, it, it abandons it in terms of the use of the rest of the property. So they can use it for their own rights.
Okay.
John?
Are these easements exclusively underground?
Well, the, the utility one, I believe are, but the, the, you know, the, the right-of-way one would obviously be on top of the ground.
There's, there's no chance that SCE could put a wire, a hot wire over the swimming pool?
No.
Well, I, I don't know. I, it's my question. They couldn't come in later and do it.
Well, Didier, you can confirm, but I believe that the utility easements are for underground, you know, access through there and would allow them to run it, the pool or however else they would want to do it. My guess is if they ever wanted to do it, that the homeowner would give them a, a, a similar right, you know, 10 feet farther away so they could keep their pool there. I'm sure they could work something out there. The big issue on this one, like I said, was the right-of-way, you know, because they're incompatible. You can't have a pool in the middle of, you know, where there's an access, but they're able to extinguish that through, you know, this Davis Sterling, you know.
Okay, the second question is Craig mentioned a question about lot size. And this is for Didier. Is this valid at all and does the house itself qualify under the TDSF rules for a lot of whatever size is legal?
Yeah, so the property was, was approved under a coastal commission, CDP. And let me pull that from the staff report.
So they, they said it was, well, we didn't have the rules on size at that time. So I'm just wondering. I guess, I guess this is a Trevor question. We're not allowing any more square footage. So is this germane at all?
Richard, so we're not increasing TDSF here, right? So.
So we're, so we're not increasing any TDSF as part of this application. And then this parcel has a future improvement deed restriction. So in the event that they wanted to enclose the carportage, they would have to apply for a new CDP application at that time.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for approval with one change, and that is that the resolution number 38 be changed to approve a landscape plan as, as landscape proposed. And they're proposing under the project 1,330 square feet of new landscape.
Yeah, I have a draft condition that if you would mind for me to read it. So it may be modify condition number 38 to read, no new landscaping other than grass is proposed with this project, therefore none is approved. Should the applicant intend to plant any new vegetation with a potential to exceed six feet in height or an area of 2,500 square feet or more, a detailed landscaping plan shall be submitted for review and approval prior to any planting.
Okay, my only question there is I don't believe our code says grass is not landscaping because we have a limitation on the size, the amount of grass you can have. So that's a question for Trevor. Should we approve this as a landscape change or ignore it with this, this proposal he made was other than grass?
Do you have concerns about the, the grass condition?
Well, my, my, my question is part of our code says you can't have 2,500 square feet or more grass. They consider that landscaping. So where in our code does it say grass isn't landscaping? That's, that's, I mean, I just want to make this clear. You, you tell me how to make the motion. I just want to approve it. He's saying, well, we don't need one because it's not landscaping and I'm going, maybe.
Is, is the grass condition existing right now, Didier?
No, it's moving.
Right, so Commissioner Mazza wants us to clarify that. So the project does include new 1,330 square feet of grass. And we put a condition saying no new landscaping was proposed.
In the, in the. My mind, there's a conflict. So I'm just want to clear it up and however you want to state it, fine with me. It's condition.
You want to say, other than the 1,300 square feet of grass, that'd be sufficient for you before approving the grass as part of this?
Yeah, I just want to prove it.
Okay. So Didier, can you specify? Just add the 1,300 square feet. Okay.
Okay, that's my motion if I can get a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. Dennis, you had your hand up?
Oh, I was going to just make a motion to approve the staff's recommendation. So I'm in.
Okay, all right. Further discussion. See, none?
Are you raising your hand or are you just holding your?
Me.
Richard had his hand up. I don't know if he was trying to speak.
Richard, do you have your hand up?
Add my pen up and I'm making note of this as we make these amendments.
Sorry.
Okay, Kathleen, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chair, I request a.
10 minutes. Let's, let's do 10 minute break. We'll be back at, at, let's do it till five after nine. Come back at five after nine.
Eric could turn off their video camera and mute.
Good night. Have a good trip.
Thank you.
You didn't have to make the force.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're all back. Right. Let's go on to item. Can you hear me? Or am I muted? No.
No, we hear you.
All right, great. Let's go on to item 4C. This is a lot merger and a coastal development permit for the property of 31573 Sea Level Drive. Can we get a staff report, please?
Good evening again, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The next item on the agenda is coastal development permit number 16012 and lot merger number 20-001 for a project located at 31573 Sea Level Drive. Next slide, please. The subject property is located in the residential neighborhood between Broad Beach Road and Sea Level Drive in the single family medium zoning district at 31573 Sea Level Drive. Next slide, please. The subject property consists of two adjoining undeveloped parcels with only ground cover slash landscaping. As shown on the Los Angeles County Assessor's tract map, the subject property consists of two lots. Lots 113 and 115 proposed to be combined into a single legal lot. Next slide, please. The project overview for the CDP is for a new 2,684 square foot, single story, single family residence, including a rooftop deck, not to exceed 18 feet in height, a 432 square foot attached garage, a 997 square foot basement, a new swimming pool measuring 14 feet wide by 47 feet long, associated pool equipment to be fully screened, hardscaping, 2,215 square foot of permeable driveway, grading, and then OWTS. And it also includes lot merger number 20-001 to merge the two legal lots into one. Next slide, please. Here we have the site plan. Next slide, please. Shown in the center is a proposed single family residence. To the left of that, we have an exterior staircase, pool equipment and the rooftop deck. Below on the slide, we have the swimming pool. And to the right, we have the OWTS and the attached garage. Next slide, please. Here we have the basement plan and per LIP section 3.6K6. It states the initial 1,000 square feet of basement shall not count towards TDSF. As such, the 997 square feet of the proposed basement were not counted towards a total development square footage. Next slide, please. Here we have the proposed 2,684 square foot, single story, single family residence with a 432 square foot attached garage. Next slide, please. Here we have the proposed roof with a rooftop deck shown in the gray hatch pattern. They are showing four air conditioning condensers and an exterior staircase leading to the rooftop deck and future solar panels, which are not part of the scope of work under the subject CDP, but shown on the plans for reference only. They will need to apply for a separate permit for the solar panels in the future. Next slide, please. Here we have the elevations. And I just wanted to point out that the palm tree is not part of the scope of work. Next slide, please. The other, the other two elevations, and again, the palm tree is not part of the scope of work. Next slide, please. Here we have story pool photographs from inside the property. To the left, top left, we have looking north into the property. To the right of that, we're looking south. And at the bottom left corner, we have an image looking northeast. And to the right of that, we're looking southwest. Next slide, please. Here we have additional story pool, or my attempt to take story pool, look at how the story pools were seen from other parts of the of the neighborhood. So to the top left, we have you from Broad Beach Road. To the right of that, we have an additional view from Broad Beach Road. And you can see in the center of that parcel, the story pools in the background. And the bottom left corner, we have a view from Sea Level Drive below. And you could see the story pools in between those two proper, two buildings. And to the right of that, we have a view from Sea Level Drive, literally outside of the driveway. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to say that staff received three inquiries to review the project plans from neighboring property owners. Staff held three in-person meetings on May 20th to discuss the proposed project. Staff also received various pieces of correspondence. All correspondence was provided and is contained in attachment five of the staff report. Additional correspondence was received after the agenda was published and the correspondence was distributed. And this was at the time when this project was first scheduled in June. Furthermore, the applicant was made aware of the neighbor concerns and consulted with the property owner. The property owner considered the concerns and they, they will be addressing those concerns tonight during the public hearing. In summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution Number 21-24 approving the proposed project as condition. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and staff are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Didier. Disclosures, please. John?
None.
David?
Visited the site, met with Scott Holly, didn't discuss anything that isn't in the report.
Dennis?
Yeah, I went to the site, you know, a month or so ago and met with the owner and Mr. Halli.
Okay, Craig?
I would say the same as those guys. And also today I spoke with Richard about, I just noticed a slight discrepancy with respect to height above grade. And I guess we'll get into that.
None for me after, since the last time I was before. Questions of staff? Okay, let's go. Craig?
Yeah, this would be for Trevor. Are, is he here? He's not here.
He was here. There he is.
You're hiding. Yeah, what, what exactly is our discretion with the merger? It's say maybe voluntary merged if, this is LIP section 15.4 protects visual resources, the coastal zone. I don't know. I mean, we see some views from Broad Beach Road that this blocks a slight bit. I don't know. What, what? Do we, do we even have discretion on the merger? It's kind of seems like it's kind of a.
Well, we have the same, the findings, I believe, are laid out here in the staff report if we pull them up here. So if we're able to make those, you know, that.
Okay, maybe, maybe I'll look, look back at that while, while we're talking about other things.
Okay. Other questions? All right, let's open the public. Oh, John, sorry.
Yeah, just a couple of things to clear it up. Didier, the exterior stairway is in the side yard setback. And the code requires that be made of fireproof material, namely steel. Is it conditioned that way?
I currently don't have a condition requiring it to be made of steel. Whenever you view the project, it said, and I'm trying to look for it as well, but it just said that it needed to be fireproof. But we can condition it, and I don't think the applicant would have any issue with that.
Okay, and then did we count the landing for the exterior basement in the TDSF?
Yes, that was part of my questions that I, that I asked whenever we viewed the project.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, let's open the public, yeah, the public hearing. Kathleen, who have we got for the applicant?
We have Scott Halli for the applicant. And then we have quite a number of members of the public. It looks like eight.
Okay, Mr. Halli. You have 15 minutes. You can use all of it or reserve some for rebuttal if you choose. There are other speakers.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for, thank you for your, for your time. First of all, there, there, there is, I also have with us the owner, Tom Keen, who will be, if there's any questions, he will be available to answer, and also Ryan, the architect. But based on, based on that, this is a clean sheet project. We, we spent a lot of time. We've been on this project about four years. And we've made a point of, you know, sticking right to the, to the code. And we would like to reserve all the rest of our time to answer any questions. And at that, thank you very much.
Okay, you, how much time is left? 14 minutes and 29 seconds.
Yes.
All right, who's, who else have we got?
We have next Suzanne first.
Okay, will you open your microphone, please?
Certainly.
Suzanne, you have three minutes. Can you make contact? I'm not hearing anything.
I'm checking to see if she's still in the meeting. She was earlier.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We got you now, yes.
Oh, okay. I thought you unmuted me. I had to unmute myself. I apologize. So what I'm basically asking of the builders and the owners is that as neighbors, we greatly appreciate their considering what they're blocking for their neighbors behind them. You had a photo of the properties and you showed a picture from Broad Beach, but that's from the street. We are behind this property and the story goals. And I feel like that house is going to be so close to our backyard that they're in our backyard. I wish that it was a little further down that hillside. It's a big hillside and it's deep. And they have no view lot, no view blockage at all on that hillside, but we have a view blockage that's tremendous. And so I would love it if they could move it down a few more feet so I didn't feel like they were in my yard. That's number one. Number two, I have an issue about the rooftop deck. The air conditioning units are right behind our house and our neighbor to the east, east or south of us. They're right in our yard and the noise will be tremendous coming up to our homes because it travels. And I would appreciate it if they could take those air conditioning units and put them on the ground on the south side of the house where we won't hear them and put them in an enclosure. And then I think it'll be further away from any other residents. And further, I'm concerned about the staircase. Number one is four foot wide. Why would anybody need a four foot wide staircase going up to the roof for storage for the air conditioning units? I feel like they're planning to put a party deck up there. And I'm really concerned about that because then that's noise, that's lighting, that's umbrellas and, and furniture and possibly trees around the thing, the plants. And by the time they're done, they're going to block even more of our view. and possibly trees around the thing, the plants. And by the time they're done, they're going to block even more of our view. And so I would appreciate it if they can put the stairs on the south side also and not use the rooftop deck for parties and not put lights and music and all of that stuff up there because that will be a big annoyance to our neighborhood. So those are my things that I have really bothering me and, um, and I just don't want to feel like our neighborhood is all of a sudden become a tenement. Because when you have houses blocking you, when you've had a view all these years, it really isn't appropriate to have somebody not pay attention to that and not build low enough. So they're not blocking us and that we still have our views. And that's just the way I feel about it. So I'd appreciate some consideration in changing the plans to, to be more modified and satisfy what our needs are.
Okay, thank you. Who's next, Kathleen?
Next, we have Dana Glance.
Dana? Can you open her up? Him, her?
Good evening. My name's Dana Glance and we live directly behind the property. Can you hear me?
Yes, we've got you. Three minutes.
I have several concerns about the project and lot merger, which Mr. Morello presented to Tom King, the applicant. None of our concerns were addressed. Therefore, I am opposing the lot merger and the project. As far as merging the two lots, two smaller homes would increase our view versus one large boxy home with a flat roof. The original plan that Tom's architect showed us before they put the four properties up for sale had a pitched roof, which provided us with a greater ocean view. I do not know if the properties are still on the market. There's four properties there. This is just two of them. First, I would like to point out that we remodeled our house five years ago. There's a very nice public ocean view from the street because we installed a glass topped fence to protect the public ocean view from our street. The present plans call for maximizing the height and width of the box like house with a rooftop deck. The large box like construction will block as much view as possible. When we were shown the original plans, the roof was pitched. Therefore, it allowed the public, us and our neighbors a greater ocean view. The current plans, however, were, were drawn with no regard to how it would affect us, our neighbors and the public. One thing we requested was that they place the air conditioning units on the ground level. Right now they are on the roof, on the roof. The significant noise will travel right up to our bedroom. We sleep with our sliding doors open. It'll impact our neighbors to the north and up slope. There's also a chimney. As you know, there is no need to put a chimney anywhere. A vent pipe would work and not block our view. Tom's original architect told us he would eliminate a chimney. The project can also be relocated closer to the east front yard setback to review, reduce the view impact on the west side of the structure. The required setback is 24 feet and the house is currently proposed to be set back at 26 feet, three inches. Therefore, it could be moved over two feet, three inches. Two feet, three inches times 18 feet high is a lot of ocean view to us. The proposed rooftop deck includes an exterior staircase to the deck. The staircase encroaches on what should be a setback. I want to repeat that. This is located where there should be nothing blocking our view. This additional four feet is an additional four feet of our lost view and to, and our neighbors' lost view to the ocean. Additionally, the four feet exceeds the minimum building safety width of 36 inches. The staircase should not be allowed or at a minimum, it should be relocated and not be located in the setback. Also, a rooftop deck should not be allowed. Rooftop decks are built for one reason, to entertain. We sleep with our sliding door open to hear the ocean. Our bedroom is located right above. The lights and the sound of music voices would be extremely disruptive. If the stairwell is lit up, the additional light will travel straight to our bedroom. During the day, furniture, heaters, umbrellas would extend beyond the loud 18 feet, further blocking our view and the public view. If landscape was allowed, it could grow even taller and completely block the view. This property has an unobstructed 180 degree view from the backyard and side yard. There's no reason they cannot entertain down by the proposed pool. Their guests would have a perfect view of the ocean and there's plenty of room down there to accommodate a large party. The only reason I can imagine they would want a rooftop deck is because it is attractive to renters or maybe they are planning on building and selling the property.
Dana, that's your time.
Excuse me?
That's your time.
Time is up.
Okay.
Next, we have, um, Michael Glance.
Okay, open him up.
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Michael Glance and, uh, we own the home directly up slope to the north of Mr. Keen's proposed project. I believe that my wife Dana has accurately described some of the problems and impacts that this project will have on us and our neighbors. To be clear, our primary living area and primary bedrooms are located directly above and very close to the proposed structure, as is the case with our neighbors. Suffice it to say that as currently designed, the proposed structure inflicts the maximum negative ocean view impact on us and the public at large and the potential noise impact on our and our neighbors' properties. We look directly down at the roof and the proposed rooftop deck location of this structure. We ask that you deny the lot merger and project as currently designed and require the applicant to redesign the project to lessen the view impairment and the noise impact for us and our neighbors and to lessen the public's ocean view impairment through our eastern side yard, which is a far better view than is shown in that picture. And we frequently see the public walking down our street and looking through the glass and enjoying that view. If you were to approve the project in its current configuration, which we hope you will not, we do ask that you condition approval on the relocation of the structure to the east to minimize the view impact, as my wife had indicated. The removal of the rooftop deck component and the setback encroaching stairs that access the rooftop deck. And at the very least, we ask that any approval of the project would require the reduction in the width of the stairs to the rooftop to the required 36 inches. Prohibit the placement on the roof of all items, including furnishings, umbrellas, plants, and that would extend above 18 foot height limit. Prohibit the use of speakers and lighting on the rooftop. Require the solar panels, which are not part of the application, but they are shown on the rendering, not extend above that 18 foot limit. Require that the railings on the roof remain clear glass. Require that the chimney be removed from the design and require that the pool equipment remain in the location shown on the plan with a solid enclosure to reduce the noise impact. The applicant has made little attempt, if any, to find a balance in this design. He could have stayed with the pitch design, designed a lower flat roof structure without a roof deck, located AC condensers at ground level. He could have located the stairs to the roof in a location that minimizes view impact. Instead, the applicant went in the opposite direction, disregarding the impact on the public and his upslope neighbors. We ask that you impose a balance on the project and deny the application unless modifications are made to address these impacts discussed tonight and in the many letters previously submitted. Please help us maintain the qualities that make Malibu so appealing for so many of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, Kathleen?
Next, we have, uh, Sher, Sher, it looks like Sherry Lafayette.
Open up her microphone.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, okay, so we are also very extremely upset with and oppose the proposed project with a flat roof and rooftop deck. A pitch roof would not block our ocean view as much or present the other significant issues of a flat top roof with air conditioning equipment and deck. The applicant's land has a perfect, unobstructed view of the ocean from three sides at ground level and plenty of entertaining space, including room for a pool shown in the plans. This owner has made no attempt to consider our view or other impacts of his project. Even the backyard, which is shown on the west side of the property, has a four foot staircase to the roof that extends into the normal setback. Further, taking away another four feet of our view. Please note that the owner didn't even set up story polls showing us the impact of the staircase. Rooftop decks are for parties and entertaining. And this will greatly impact our enjoyment of our house and right above his and our neighbors. The noise, the music, the lighting, the people talking, partying will travel right into our bedrooms and our neighbors' bedrooms. It's right there. We can just imagine how horrible this is going to be for us and our neighbors. Especially if the house were ever used as an Airbnb or a other rental. Furthermore, we are also concerned about the lighting, speakers, furniture, landscaping, that when they decorate the rooftop deck, you know, umbrellas, heaters and landscape will extend well above the 18 foot height limit, further blocking our ocean view more. We do not think this is fair and we are so opposed to the air conditioning equipment that's going to be put on the roof. It's going to be cause so much noise for us and our neighbors. So that's what I have to say. And that's why we oppose that. And it's just, thank you. Thank you so much for taking your time.
Who's next?
The last person we have is Amir Kalantari, but I don't see them in the meeting.
Okay, why don't you take a minute and see if you can find, make sure that they're not in the meeting? I'll tell you what, we're, let's go back, let's go back to the applicant. They've got 14 minutes and 29 seconds. Let's open up Mr. Holly's mic.
Hi, okay, so, um, I think a lot of these questions I'm going to have Tom Keen, the owner, address because we did make, we, we made, uh, we have a lot of emails. We had a lot of contact with, with, uh, especially with the glances, you know, going back and forth with different proposals. And a lot of these view issues from the street on Broad Beach, I mean, I mean, you see the pictures, the, the glass rolling in front of their house. Clearly, it's, it, it's not, there's no view from there to speak of, especially if you're, unless you're on a ladder. So a lot of these things are, are, um, I think they're overstated. I think regarding the roof deck, I mean, the glances have a roof deck in their house. And I think within the last maybe a month and a half, the kids had a great party up there for, and there was a lot of music going on, a lot of, a lot of commotion. And, um, I called Mr. Keen, asked him if they could keep it down, which they said they would, which was nice. And that was it. But they, they have, they have the luxury of having a roof deck in their house. And the last thing on my end that I'll put Tom on is, is that we made a point of making this, this a clean sheet project so that, and that's what we're allowed to do. So saying that, Tom, why don't you, uh, jump in and try to address some of these other issues?
Indeed. Thank you, Scott, and thank you commissioners for both the time spent here. Last month when we didn't get to it and certainly those of you that visited. I can go through some of those details. I think Scott raised a few, like there are other roof decks. Some of the folks talking enjoy roof decks. Some of the folks talking have air conditioners on their roofs. We don't intend to rent the house. Obviously, I can't predict forever into the future, but that's not our intent. We bought this home almost 20 years ago. It's a, we actually own a little one next door. As some of you know well, we're building one on the backside between this parcel and Broad Beach Road. That, that was a seven year project. Where you folks granted us an ECP in 2014 and another neighbor managed to lay the thing, including suing the city and coastal and myself. I'm losing at all points, but, but essentially adding seven years to the process. As Scott mentioned earlier, we're four years on this one. And I think it is important. We've got some slides, uh, slides nine and 10. I think show evidence that I actually tried quite hard in July of 19 to include the glances who had met at one of the tract meetings. I'm president of our association there. They were getting involved with the association. At that time, we had a plan for our 20 year vision of a Cape Cod compound that was going to have a one and a half story. And they weighed in with strong beliefs that that was not the way they wanted to see it. If you look at the slide nine, you can see a discussion with them via email in which I proposed some changes to that house. I think that's the one they're describing with the sloped roof that they would prefer having now. And if, if that wasn't something they wanted.
Kathleen, it's supposed to be slides that are, that he's, he's presenting. He keeps referencing them. Do, Alex, can we put those up?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
So I go, I go through this. I don't know if we can go through every word of it, but we, we make a proposal to try to lower this by three feet. But it is still a two-story section. And then if you get to the fourth paragraph, it says, if in the event this doesn't, isn't, is not, which I mean not to your liking, I'll move to the second option. And I think it's somewhat remarkable and kind of disingenuine to say I haven't tried with my neighbors because I imagine it's not unique. It's not normal that somebody in my seat actually offers either home build to my neighbor to make the choice. And what Michael came back to me with, uh, which is inside slide 10 is they want to, uh, they want to determine other things and neither one in fact was supported. So it's not really accurate that they were behind the sloped roof. They didn't like that one and subsequently they didn't like this one either. We did not begin with any desire to build a flat Malibu modern house. But in our desire to keep this clean sheets at every step of the way in these last two years with the architectural team, to conform to clean sheets, we ended up with this shape and this size. And frankly, a huge part of the house underground, which was never our objective. I am open. Uh, I'm certainly open. If, if, if my neighbors would agree that this could move us forward and we don't just have another multi round of dispute ahead of us. I'm open to things like narrower staircases. That was an architectural feature. I think the concept was likely to allow somebody to go up and somebody to go down at the same time. We could live certainly with a narrower staircase. I'm open to, uh, looking to the more modern side venting of the fireplace. Again, that was an architectural feature. I certainly didn't realize it would stand out so much. I'm looking at a photo in front of me that, that is slide one of Suzanne's house there. She's got chimneys on her roof. She's got side barriers on her deck. She's got air conditioners on the roof. And, you know, I, I didn't notice that a chimney was going to be a hot item. I think a lot of these hot items are actually just desires to delay and install the project. But I hope that the fact that we've worked so hard to make it a clean sheets project will in fact matter because we really have tried. And in my statements to the glances, when we very much reluctantly moved away from the design we, we'd studied for years on the east coast. It was because my wife and I don't feel we have another seven years to go through this process like the other home took us. And we want it to be simpler, much simpler. I'm 66, don't have a whole lot of years ahead. And we'd like to enjoy this compound with our family. So appreciate the chance to share my thoughts and I'm open to any questions. But again, I'd like to show flexibility and also like to include, we can be flexible. If, if sound studies would demonstrate that ACs in another spot that works for the property are less obtrusive, I'm certainly open to working with that. Chimney, AC, stair width. But I will, I will add that recently in the, in the tract, we've had an issue go to vote. Doug Bird, who I think y'all know pretty well, conducted a partial study and his assessment was 40%, 40% of the Mihoa tract homes, of which there are 96 of them, have roof decks or have flat roofs and/or roof decks. So it's hardly, um, not uncommon. So I want to make that point as well.
Okay, Mr. Holly?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just save the last six minutes for, uh, if any more discussion, if that's possible. Was that not possible?
You can use the six minutes any way you want. If, if there are questions from the commissioners to, they can, they can ask those outside of the six minutes, even if you've used them all up. So, um,
Let me just add one thing then. Regarding the view, um, between the Glances' house and Carol Bird's house, the two houses behind us. What no one realizes is that we already have an approved house that, that we got approved in that seven year process that, 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 that covers most, most of that, whatever they are seeing through that. It's already, that, that view is already gone and Carol Bird went ahead and planted these 20 plus foot trees across the entire back of her property. These twenty plus foot trees across the entire back of her property. To, I, and I guess, I don't know why, but she decided that she just was not going to, she didn't want to see the house. So she already planted a huge hedge across there herself. So. Most of this view has been blocked by them, not, you know, and, and also a pre-approved house. So. Saying that, I think basically, again, we, we designed this house. And I think, uh, in the last meeting we went through on this project, you, you, the city picked the height, they said eighteen feet. And they didn't say twenty two, they didn't say sixteen, so we stayed with eighteen. So we're, 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 we're legal all the way through as far as we're concerned. And as far as the planning department's concerned, we did exactly what they asked us to do, to stay within the, within the rules. And we think this project should be approved. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else, Kathleen?
Uh, no, that is, um, those are it.
That last speaker you can't find?
Uh, no.
All right, that concludes the public hearing. Well, I'll back to the commission table. Commissioners, who would like to begin? Yes, David.
I'd like to move this right along and suggest that we adopt the planning commission resolution with a couple of, uh, suggested changes. If they're acceptable to the rest of the group. Based on what I heard, I believe the owner said that he would be willing, uh, or Scott did, to move the air conditioning unit off the roof onto the ground. If so, I think that would be one condition. Another would be to narrow the, uh, roof. The stairway going up from forty eight inches to thirty six. Or less, but I'd do thirty six. And another would be, as I think I heard stated, to not have a chimney on the roof. But instead have a piping or something that doesn't have the, the same, uh, sort of. Impact with on the roof that would cause issues for, um, I don't know how to describe it.
It was a side vented system he was talking.
Yeah, side vented system, thank you. And then the last thing I would, uh, suggest is that the. I believe there was a, a mention of the pool equipment being put into a shed or a facility that could deal with the noise issue. So that it would be enclosed and subject to those four things and anything anyone else would like to add, uh, I would like to move that we approve it.
I, I'd like to second that with some additions if you accept them, and that is. That I'd like to adopt the conditions we put on the Larkspur houses. On the roof deck, namely. And as I remember, I asked Richard to get that, uh, conditioned out today. Uh, we had limited. Uh, the absolute time of, uh, closure. I think we had limited lighting, uh, to turn off with timers. Uh, there were three or four things we, uh, did, trying to come up with a standard rooftop deck, party house limitations. And do you have that, Richard? Those limitations?
I, I was able to get those conditions, so I, so there was three. So, uh, so number one was all proposed air conditioning units located on the rooftop must be equipped with soundproofing insulation. Uh, the second one was, um, any future rooftop lighting, I, sorry, let me just. Any future rooftop lighting must comply with dark sky ordinance and must be equipped with motion detector and timer. No string lines are permitted on the rooftop deck except for seasonal lights from November fifteenth through January fifteen only. And the third one was noise emitted from the rooftop deck may not exceed forty decibels.
Okay, uh, so if that's acceptable, I'd like to include that and eliminate any one of the conditions that conflicts with that. The other thing I would like, if that's acceptable, David.
David, is that, that's back to you.
Uh huh. It is, I just feel slightly uneasy that where the people that we're doing this for don't have those restrictions. But this house will have those restrictions, but.
I, I hope we attack, what I'm trying to do is attack all rooftop decks.
No, I get it. So yes, it's acceptable.
I think.
Trevor.
Want to, to ra, uh, number one, that if you're moving the air conditioners, then the first one wouldn't apply. But, um, the forty decibels, I believe this was accepted voluntarily by that applicant. So you may want to have the applicant here weigh in on, on that.
Well, I wanted to, first of all, I want, the, I didn't hear the offer to move the HVAC unit onto the ground. And, um, what I heard was the, uh, narrower staircase and the side venting of the, of the fireplace. So I would like to confirm with Scott, um, or Mr. Keen, whether. They have any serious objection to moving the HVAC units off, off of the rooftop deck. They may in fact have them. Scott, can, can you un, unblock?
Yeah, well, I'd like, I'd like, I'd like Tom to address that. I'm, this is, this is Tom's house. Uh, but regarding, regarding the, um, this, you know, the, the rooftop deck, I agree with David. I mean, it's like. I mean, seriously, the, they, they have parties on the deck next door and they're, and they're going.
Okay, Scott, we're not open for argument now, this is.
Yeah, let me take a crack. First of all, uh, you know, I spend twenty five hours a, a month as a volunteer. As president for this homeowners group. I really like the Glances. I like Suzanne. I like all my neighbors. So I think we can rely upon, I don't need to condition. Some of what you wish for me to do about rooftop decking. By asking anyone else with a rooftop deck to somehow become compliant with the same thing. I, I wouldn't do that.
Mr. Keen, the question, the question, Mr. Keen, the question before us has to do strictly with the HVAC units on the rooftop. And again, the suggestion from Mr. Wild is that they be moved down off of the rooftop. I didn't hear you offer that when you were talking about things you were willing to do. I'm asking you whether that is a serious problem for you or not.
I should, Jennings, what I said in all three cases of stair width, AC units and, um.
Chimney, chimney venting.
Yes, what I said in all this, I'm open to addressing those. The question I have is one that I heard a little earlier, which is. I, I don't mean to make it conditional, but I guess I'd, I'd like to understand if this is what my neighbors need to support the project.
Right, that, that's, that's, I understand.
There were four more years of, of what I would call nonsense in my last process from this point forward. Because the neighbors just continued to press on delay tactics. So my question is, if I do these things, does it matter?
I remember the previous project well, and I, I, I get your point. That, uh, when you said you were willing to do these things, you made it clear that, that these were sort of. Things you were willing to do if it moved the project, actually moved the project forward and quelled their opposition to the project. So. That, that's a point what I can, uh, and if I was wrong about the HVAC, fine. So where we stand now is, David. You, you have those, those, um. I have, I have limitations that you have proposed. John has proposed an additional. Issues with regard to the, the same things that we were opposed on, on Wandemere, no.
Larkspur.
Larkspur. And, uh, Trevor raised the point that he thought that, that those were voluntarily. Exceeded to in that particular case. And so the question is whether you are willing to accept, uh, John's proposal or John's. Suggestion as Didier recited it as a condition to, um. As a friendly amendment, I should say, to your motion.
Joe Jennings?
Just a second, I just asked him a question, let him answer.
Yes, ask and tell him something. It's okay, I'll tell him later.
Yes, yes.
You're willing to accept that?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Uh, I just wanted to point out that the forty decibels came from municipal code. Now, the other thing I would. Like to clear up.
Just a second, John. Craig had his hand up, he was before you, so before you move to a different subject, Craig.
Topic, talking on amendments, but okay.
Craig.
You're muted, Craig.
You can let John finish, that's okay, I can jump in after him.
The only other thing I wanted to add is, to me, it's unclear. About this in the code, it's unclear about fireproof stairway. So I was going to add steel. Because I don't know what else you could do, but I just wanted to clear that up. If it's a big deal, I don't care, but, um.
What code are you talking about, John? Is this the building code or is this some, it's part of our?
It's our code says you may not build a stairway in the side yard setback that is not fireproof.
But, but, uh, Didier said that that's already a requirement. I don't want to say it has to be steel as long as we say it has to be fireproof.
Make it out of asbestos, I don't care, we'll drop that one. I don't know what else you could make it out of. The other thing I would like to add is that, uh, no plants, furniture, umbrellas. Or anything can exceed eighteen feet, uh, because of the view blockage.
Eighteen feet seems reasonable to me if we're able to do that, sure.
Do we, do you mean eighteen feet from the deck or do you mean that?
I mean, eighteen feet elevation as we measure buildings.
Uh, can't exceed four feet, basically, that's the height of the.
Oh, I thought you meant eighteen feet from the deck, I was.
No, he's talking about eighteen feet from the, from the, uh, uh, finished grade or natural grade, whichever.
Frankly, four feet is a chair. I mean, the question is, do you put up ficus trees and, and, uh, you know, umbrellas and all this kind of junk? Cause it's the view issue. That's what I'm after. You can put a chair, all the chairs you want, they're all four feet high.
You're asking, you, if you're asking me, no.
So you're, you're willing to, you're willing to let them put.
John, he gave you, John, he gave you the answer. Make a motion to amend, uh, once, the, the, the motion that's on the table. He's already said no.
Okay, I will.
Okay, can you get a second? Is there a second to John's motion?
I make the motion to amend. Uh, do I have a second?
What, what, I'm sorry, John, what's your emotion?
My motion is that you, that the roof. Blockage may not exceed eighteen feet.
From, from the ground.
The ground. Which is like plants and.
Right.
Umbrellas and junk like that.
Okay, so is there, this is a, this is a motion to amend David's motion. And the question is whether he has a second, does he have a second?
I will second that.
Craig seconds it, all right. So further discussion on the motion to amend. All right, Kathleen. Yes, Dennis?
Okay, so you're, what you're, what my fellow commissioners are saying is the umbrellas are going to be four feet high?
Yeah, that's what he, nothing can exceed four feet is what he's saying.
Everything's seventeen eight right now, the whole, they, they're, this is a clean sheet, as Mr. Halli said, this is clean sheet. Now, you're saying, in other words, you're saying you can't have an umbrella up there, I understand the plans. And you can have a couch, you can have this, but you have an umbrella, does that mean it's going to come down and gets put away every day? Is that what you're after here? Because it's, you know, it's going to be higher than.
Yeah, that's what I'm after, because it'll blow away if you don't, but, uh. I'm saying the neighbors are complaining about view blockage. We have an ordinance that says you can't block views over eighteen feet. I'm just trying to solidify that.
Okay. All right, so Kathleen, you want to call the role on the, uh, motion to amend?
Clarify that, the, the motion here is to amend, uh, the vice chair's motion to include an additional condition. That would prohibit anything from, um, remaining on the roof. What overnight, that is, that exceeds, uh, four feet, is that, is that the motion?
Yeah, or, or eighteen feet, uh, however you want to define it. Well, I think, uh, the code is talking, always talking about eighteen feet for view blockage, so I would prefer to define it that way.
Nothing that stays overnight will exceed a, a eighteen feet from finished grade, correct?
Right.
Correct. Natural grade or finished grade, whichever is lower.
Right.
Okay, so that's the motion. Kathleen, would you call the role, please?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Let me ask one time, you guys are stating they can have umbrellas, but they've got to put everything away at night or by dusk or whatever. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay, yes.
Vice Chair Wild?
Oh.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Yeah, motion to amend, carries.
Okay, so his motion is amended and that, that respected. Are there further friendly amendments or non-friendly amendments that anybody wishes to offer?
I, I've got, I've got some things here so far. Um, and first of all, let's go back a bit. Um, if you look at the Plan A two point one. The west elevation shows the house to be approximately, uh, eight, uh, I'm sorry, nineteen feet. Above natural grade. So, and I had a conversation with Richard about this today and hopefully maybe he's followed up on that, but. To me, it sounds like the implication is you basically could have the same plan, but you need to excavate it out. Half a foot or a foot deeper than has been proposed, which would make the eighteen feet. Actually turn out to be a foot lower and would help the neighbors a little bit. Do I need to describe this on, on sheet eight, A two point one? If you have it in front of you?
I, I, I need to get staff's viewpoint on this. You, you, you agree that the building exceeds eighteen feet? From finish or natural grade, whichever is lower? And if so, why did you bring this to us?
Um, the, the way that I scaled out the project plans, it came out to eighteen feet or it's showing that it's below eighteen feet. And then also when I compare with the project applicant or the architect, the height that they provided was seventeen feet, ten inches and three quarters. And I scaled the plants and that's the measurement that I came up with. And if there's an issue with the height, we have conditional approval number twenty eight. That requires them to submit a framing survey, when framing is completed, verifying the heights.
Okay, what I'm, what I'm seeing is a top, the, the highest elevation is ninety one feet. The natural grade is seventy two feet. Nineteen feet. That's, that's on the plan.
Uh, Didier, uh, to clarify, you measured it from natural grade, correct?
Right.
And also, the. The roof that is forward of the deck railing, that roof is actually lower decision, correct?
Right.
That's the, the reason for, uh, the complaint.
All right, well, I'm, what I'm looking at is, uh, nineteen feet, straight up square, printed on the plan. So if, if I'm getting pushed back on that, then I'm just a no vote from the get go. I mean, it seems like to me it's easy to just say, just bring the, the thing down a foot and maybe Didier, you, you solve that with your condition. I don't know for a fact, but I would want to just make sure that in, in fact, what gets built is no more than eighteen above natural grade.
Didier, what condition are we talking, is you?
Um, it's condition, um, condition number twenty eight, um, it reads.
Well, we haven't given them anywhere in any of the resolutions, a, uh, variance for height increasing over eighteen feet, correct?
No.
They're violating the whole banana if, uh, they went nineteen feet.
Right, and they have, by twenty eight, they have to, when they complete the framing, they have to submit the, the survey to, uh.
That's standard, yeah, everybody has to do that in town. Everybody, that's a normal thing to do. You've got to end to build in a safety.
What might be problematic here though is that it's above natural grade and when it's built, it will appear to be eighteen feet above finished grade. But that's. Still a foot higher than it should have been.
Staff is not agreeing with, with your assessment, are they?
Well, are you, are you guys all looking on the plan with me? There's nothing to disagree about it. This, it's printed on the plan.
Let me open up Scott Holly's microphone here. Scott, can you hear me? Kathleen, can you open up Scott Hallie's? There he goes.
Yeah, hi.
Hi, you understand what's going on here?
I do, and I think I, I mean, I agree with John where, you know, believe me, when I build houses. The city makes me survey the foundation, the grading, the foundation, the, 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 um. Some of them, the top plate and the, and, and the, and the roof itself. And it's, they will not let you pour concrete unless you do all this stuff and they won't let you, they won't let you, you know, continue with your framing. So. You're, you're, you, you, John, do you shoot yourself in the foot if you, if you try to pull that one off? This is not.
Hold on, Scott, Scott, Commissioner Hill's argument, Commissioner Hill's argument is that. Fine, but by the time you get done with your foundation, you now have finished grade. How do you know that when you survey it, that you're, you're not going to exceed eighteen feet from, uh, natural grade? Because it's, which, it's eighteen feet from natural or finish, whichever is lower.
And I'm just reading what's on the plan here.
Well, we have an elevation that's on this, on the survey, I mean, Ryan. Well, we have an elevation that's on, on the survey. I mean, Ryan might be able to address it. The Arctic, we have, we have an elevation that's kind of in space. It says you can be at, you know, eighteen, it's a certain number off of a benchmark on the property. So that's what we're going to be basing this thing off of. So
Well, you're.
If there's a low corner and one corner fits a little low, obviously, when we, when we do our, our finished grading, we're going to, we're going to make sure the lot's flat. And if it turns out, I mean, I, I, I'm just saying this, we have a grading, but we have to, we have to follow. This stuff has been calculated by engineers. So but I'm just telling you that we're, with that, this, this project is not going to be over eighteen feet based on a benchmark that was established when we started the whole project.
But, and that's finished grade. What you have here is.
Commissioner Hill, when they start work, they have to have building, their survey come out and they have to have a certified letter from survey saying they're starting from this elevation. So there's no way that they can be over the eighteen feet or the nineteen that you're thinking maybe they'll get to. They can't do that. They have to start with a certified letter.
Yeah, and, and, and one other thing, too, this lot is, is flat. This lot's not, this lot's, this lot's, it's as flat as a plate. So there's not, there's, I, I don't know where, there might be some dirt that's stacked up out there, but that dirt's going to get, you know, hauled away back to finish, to the original grade. But this lot's a flat lot. I mean, there's.
Can we ask the architect why the plans show nineteen feet?
Sure.
Nineteen feet.
Do we have Mr. Levis here?
That would be helpful because we're not seeing nineteen feet on these plans.
Okay, I'm looking, I'm looking on sheet A two point one.
Hello, hello, everybody.
Yes, okay, Mr. Levis.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much, everybody, for all of your time. Mr. Hill, I think what you're seeing here, and it's a bit erroneous on my part, but on A two point one, the west elevation, there's a forward projection line of the grade that is, is brought forward in the elevation. The roof beyond, the great room roof beyond, the existing grade rises up in that location. And the entire building is under eighteen feet as measured from either existing grade or excavated grade.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking, I see what you're looking at. I'm looking at the the right side of the drawing.
Next to the palm tree.
Next to the palm tree. And you have sort of written on the palm tree, you have ninety-one feet. And then you have a finished grade at seventy-three feet, seventy-three point one. And then below.
That's the, that's the finished grade projected forward on that elevation.
Right.
The grade beyond where the great room is located is higher up than it is at this end of the elevation.
I'm not talking about a great room. I'm talking about a roof overhang on the, the.
That roof overhang is, is beyond. It's, it's back in the drawing. The, the, the project drawings have three D.
Yeah.
And if you look at the three D shots on A two point three, you can see on either the upper right or the middle right that that great room roof is, is much further eastward than the elevation that's called out on the elevation mark. On that elevation.
I got it. That, that, that is clear to me. And that makes sense to me. And I'm sorry that I, that caught me up, but that, that did seem like.
Yeah, no, I would never, I would never design anything that violates the eighteen feet. That's just sacrosanct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levis.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
A few more potential conditions to Commissioner Wiles' list. A clear glass railing was mentioned. Is that part of the plan now? Or is that something we want to condition?
Always was.
Okay. We have three foot staircase. Just to be clear, on the staircase, whatever it's made out of, can we just say it's view permeable? I, if it's a steel staircase, it's view permeable.
I, I don't, I don't know what you mean. And we just said a glass, glass enclosed, but I mean, if it's made out of steel, you can't see steel.
No, what, what, what you're talking about is the back plate of your risers.
Oh, the risers are what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So if it's. If you have a steel staircase, you can look through it.
Yeah, yeah.
If you have a wood one, you can't, you know, that's basically the difference.
Can we include that one?
Sure.
Okay.
And John, you agree with that, too?
No, that's fine.
But what's, can you specify what that condition is a little more clearly?
View permeable staircase?
No, no risers on the stairs.
You're not going to have an opaque surface in between the stairs themselves. So the risers can't be.
Stilled in.
Is, is view permeable staircase sufficient description?
That's language we'd use for a fence, so.
Okay, that's all you.
Did you have the, the code section open? I'm trying to find it as we speak here. I think it, does it say open steel?
Well, Richard, I, I found at one point where it says steel, and then I could not find it when I went through it again. But it does say fireproof, so. I think that was the intent. I, I, but it's somewhere in there. I found it at one point that it had to be steel. But again, I don't think it's a huge deal because what else are you going to make this fireproof?
Yeah. Can we specify that if, if we're putting the HVAC on the ground already, that we put it in some kind of enclosure that will help with sound?
Sure.
Sure, I accept that.
Okay. We, we heard from one of the neighbors that the setback on the street side, it's actually two feet and change further in. And they were saying, well, can we move it to the east by two feet? Is that problematic? Is that, you, you, you keep the, basically the same design? Because if the site isn't very terrain sensitive, you could just take the same design and shift it over two feet. Is that?
I don't like the idea of a neighbor telling someone where they have to put their house on their lot. So no, that's not acceptable to me.
And that could be a geological setback thing, too, Commissioner Hill. It may not just be what's on the plan. It could be a geological restriction.
We don't.
I, I, I agree with David.
Okay. I noticed there's a six foot front yard fence. I think that we need to call forty-two inches. I don't know how we got a six foot fence on the front yard in the first place. Maybe it's because they think it, it's sort of the side of the house, but it's the street side.
I, I, I believe there's a provision in there that they must follow the code section on fences, which should take care of that. I don't know if we need to. Richard decides whether we, do we need to spell that out, Richard, or is that just an error in the drawing?
Did you, do we have an elevation of that fence?
I don't see an elevation, and I don't see the note regarding the six foot fence.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That was a note I made when we looked at this two months ago, so I, I didn't look at it back again. But.
The, the condition that's in there that they have to follow code section, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Doesn't it?
Yeah.
And you're allowed a, a six foot fence in the front yard. It's just the way the code reads is that it's only allowed to be solid up to forty-two inches.
Right.
Above that, the last thirty inches is visually permeable.
Yeah, well, when I looked at it two months ago, I had, I had a, some issue with that. So that's, and my bad for.
The pool, Commissioner Hill, you have the pool, so you got to make sure people can't just climb over that. So there's that height restriction as well.
Yeah, no, that's good. I think lastly, oh, is there, is, would it be premature or inapplicable to condition any future solar panels not to be higher than the parapet?
We cannot, as I understand it, we cannot condition solar panels, period.
I don't. Do they?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. There's, there's specific state laws that, that regulate the solar panel issue. And it's not before us here, and we can't put restrictions on, on the future development. That will travel with its own, you know, whatever permits needed for that.
Right.
Currently, it's the right word out there, and they're showing the solar panels under eighteen feet.
Right, they are. Correct.
Right, but we don't have a choice. We can't do it.
Okay. Okay, then, then that's what I've got.
Okay.
Anybody else?
We have a, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Further discussion? All right, well, I will take a strike at it. Yeah, this is, as, as, as they emphasized from the beginning, this is a clean sheet project. And I I understand Mr. Kane has offered to do various things if, if it was removed, the, the objections to his project. But there's no assurance that that's the case. And so I'm not willing to support any of the amendments, except that the amendment that nothing on the rooftop deck can exceed eighteen feet above natural or finished grade. But I think that's appropriate. But but other restrictions on rooftop decks are problematic for me because we're doing it case by case. And in fact, as they pointed out, there's a lot of rooftop decks in this section, and particularly, or, or at least some of them being in the complaining neighbors' houses. I I think that all of those things, the narrowness of the, of the stairs, the, the side venting of the fireplace, the location of the HVAC units are all matters that, that Mr. Keane and Scott Halli should negotiate with their neighbors if they can get a negotiation going. If they can't, then it's up to them where they place those things. So that's why I'm going to oppose the motion.
Okay, I just want to point out that for the applicant that personally, I believe you, you solve these problems here and you don't have to go to the city council and spend all your time solving it there. Hopefully, the neighbors understand we did the best we could and don't appeal. But as, as you said, we have zero control over who, who comes in and appeals.
Yes, David.
Let me just add to that. I we are acting in effect as the voice of the neighbors here and trying to make compromise that seems reasonable. Personally, I would be extremely offended and disappointed if after we're trying to act on their behalf, the neighbors continue to make life difficult for this project, given the concessions that we're trying to come up with here. That's.
Right, I, I, I understand your position. My, my position is different because I don't believe that we are supposed to be trying to arrive at some sort of accommodation. I believe that our job is to look at the statutes and apply them. And this is a clean sheet project. That's the end of the story.
I understand.
Well, the public interest, and, and I think there's some overlap there.
Yeah, it's a public interest can cover a multitude of sins. Let's call the roll.
Can I clarify the motion?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I believe the motion is staff's recommendation with the following additions. First is that the air conditioning units shall be on the ground and enclosed. Second is that the stairway shall be thirty-six inches or less in width and view permeable. Third is the chimney shall be replaced with a side vented system. Fourth is that the pool equipment shall be enclosed. The fifth is that nothing left overnight on the roof may exceed eighteen feet above finished or natural gla, grade, whichever is lower. And then the two conditions that DDA listed, the first regarding rooftop lighting that complies with dark skies. And the second that noise emitted shall not exceed forty decibels at the property line. Does that accurately reflect your motion, Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Chair Jennings?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, that concludes item four C. We're now on to item five A. This is a temporary personal development, written a temporary use permit for the chili cookoff. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the Planning Commission. The item you have before you tonight is their thirty-ninth Annual Chili Cookoff, sponsored by the Boys and Girls Club, taking place over Labor Day weekend at the vacant parcel located at two, three, five, seven, five Civic Center Way. Next slide, please. Picture here is the vicinity map and aerial photograph of the proposed event site. The event site is located on Civic Center Way, directly across from Legacy Park. Next slide, please. As in twenty nineteen, the applicant has requested to expand the event to host a one-day fundraiser to take place on Thursday, September second twenty twenty-one with approximately four hundred guests. The event will feature live music, food beverages, and auction items. Starting the following day, the chili cookoff event will include approximately forty-five to sixty-five vendors with an estimated eight thousand guests on Friday and five thousand guests per day Saturday through Monday. The event breakdown will be Tuesday, September seventh, and will be concluded on September ninth. Next slide, please. Picture here is the site plan, which shows the area for amusement rides, games, vendor booths, the music stage and seating areas. And marked in red shows the displays of the fire access for the event. Next slide, please. Here's the parking plan. There is additional off-site parking available for the event in the surrounding areas. The five lots include the City Hall parking lot, the Miramar lot, the Wave lot, the library lot, and the Urban Outfitters lot, as well as an Uber ride share and drop-off located at two, three, nine, oh, one Civic Center Way. Next slide, please. I would like to add as a point of clarification and to add to the resolution, the following condition. The event shall comply with all state, California, and Los Angeles County COVID nineteen social distancing requirements. And this condition was inadvertently omitted from the resolution, and we would like to make sure it gets added into the resolution. In summary, staff recommends the approval of CDP twenty-one dash zero two seven with the inclusion of the aforementioned condition. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Disclosures, Dennis?
Yes, I spoke with Casey Ernst today. We just discussed the Uber situation and hopefully maybe came up with a plan to make that work.
David?
Same thing.
John?
Ah, yes, I, I talked to Casey for a while. We went over some of the conditions I'm going to propose. She seemed to agree with all but one that I, that one I didn't mention, which I came up with this afternoon.
Greg? Greg, you're muted.
Yeah, I spoke with Casey today and basically talked about the Uber stuff.
Okay, none for me. Let's get the public hearing going. Who we got, Kathleen?
We have the applicant Casey Ernest and Ashlyn Kearns. And we have a member of the public, Ryan Embry.
Okay, let's.
Chair Jennings, before we, Commissioner Smith, can you explain, you said you discussed something about a, a plan about the Uber. Can you explain what that is? So that could be commented by the public? There's something that was discussed about?
The, the thought that the Uber parking being over at the apartments or the condos over there. I just, I just thought that was kind of, I guess somebody got permission from them to do this for four or five days, whatever it is. And so I was just trying to figure out, or we were just talking about maybe what another alternate plan would be. We know a lot of the stuff by Legacy Park. There's no parking. And my thought was to just park inside by the library curbside. And that way people can go in and out, and it's a safe way to, to maneuver through the parking lot. There wouldn't be any problems and people can walk right next door to the, by the library over there in Water District Office. That's all.
Okay, Trevor?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Casey?
Hi there. Thank you, Commissioner Jennings and members. I just want to say with regards to the Uber, we are completely open to finding a new location for that pickup and drop-off. We are following staff's recommendation at this point. I agree with the commissioner's concerns about having the pickup and the drop-off at the current location. And spoke with my team and related to our city team that we'd like to explore other options and other locations, including the library lot where we currently have our ADA spaces.
Okay.
I don't have a conclusion on what that's going to be yet, but I, I know that city staff is open to exploring other options and potentially is favorable towards that as well.
Okay, let's see if city staff can give us some help with how we might. Okay, let's see if city staff can give us some help with how we might write that into our approval or motion. But is there further presentation you wish to make?
Um, no further presentation. You know, we're excited to be able to resume this event. Obviously, our city and so many Angelenos and visitors have come to enjoy. You know, there's it's an anticipated event this year for for obvious reasons. And, you know, we just were excited to be able to host it. There's a quick turnaround, given the current scenario with all of the COVID situation and compliance, but we've received a lot of feedback from the community and people wanting the event to resume. And, you know, so we're excited to be able to host it if that's the direction that we're headed in.
Okay, you've got thirteen minutes and twelve seconds remaining of your time, so you can come back and rebut if Ryan Embry has something nasty to say to you. Do you want to open up Ryan's microphone for me, please?
Thank you for the great introduction. I wanted to say I support the Boys and Girls Club and donated money, and this is a cherished annual event, and it's important that it get going again. The part that needs to be corrected in the staff proposal is the uber bad idea of trying to use the residential parking in front of the condo complex at the top of the hill for uses within the Civic Center flatlands. I'm not trying to say that that isn't public property, but it is so inconvenient for the proposed use. I think it's dangerous. It is a steep hill, and those are angled parking spaces that back out onto Civic Center Way, which is a fairly high-traveled route, which will be used even more heavily for people coming from the valley to attend this event. And my concern is, it's not just this event. I think the staff of the city needs to understand that there are some incurable problems within the geography of this civic center that expanding the impacts from a proposed use of the city's land for special events should not permeate up into the residential areas, whether it's noise or parking or a transit depot use at a facility that's not made for that. This is not curbside. The city decided and their planning commission approved angled parking in this location and backing out into a busy roadway, even at dusk or with the sun shining in your eyes coming down that hill is just not a good idea. But I really wanted to speak in general to the idea that this is an existing residential use that's predated the city by dozens of years. It was constructed in nineteen seventy-one when Civic Center Way was still named Malibu Canyon Road. And it's so says so on Ron Goldman's plans for our condo complex. And I said, I thought that's a mistake. I'm like, no, look it up. That was Malibu Canyon Road. So it is a strategic arterial. And the calming that is the effect in the goal of city councils from the nineties, Jeff will remember, that this use is is not supportive of the city's goals and objectives for calming the traffic and making this a more serene and residential environment. And that there are no other nearby uses for those few angled parking spaces except for the two hundred and twenty people who live in Malibu Canyon Village and need those parking spaces even during this event. So I would like you to take the the idea of using those angled spaces off the table and and remove it as a condition or place it as a condition prohibiting the use as an example for future city to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, you still have Casey, you still have enough thirteen minutes or so if you want to speak.
Um, I, Ryan, I I completely agree with you and would like to come up with a solution that makes sense. You know, for the majority of our surrounding residents in Malibu. So, you know, I don't know if if Commissioner would like to condition this, but I would like to be able to work with city staff to come up with a solution for Uber and ride share, which is obviously very important for the event in terms of safety and just, you know, transit. But I would like the opportunity to work with city staff to come up with a solution outside of the current option.
Okay, thank you. Kathleen, are there other speakers?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay, let's close the public hearing and bring come back to the commission table. John, you've got your hand up, but I I don't. Where'd staff go? Right. You got any suggestions on how we can prepare a resolution that might take those parking spaces off the table, as Ryan suggests, but would still allow enough flexibility to come up with another solution to the problem?
I have a motion that can do that.
Ah, well, okay, John, you and Craig had your hands up at the same time, but I'll go with John because you've got a motion. I always love
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation with the following conditions. One is that other than the use of the head-in parking on on Civic Center Way in front of the condos, the applicant can work with the Public Works Department to determine the location of Uber pickups and whatevers. And just assign them that job. Now, the other motion I would like to make, and I talked to Casey about this today, is this is for an event Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. And one of the proposals is to have a flashing red light at Civic Center Way and Web Way on those days. That's the second busiest. That's the first busiest intersection in Malibu. It's not on Pacific Coast Highway, and it's all of the Z traffic. So my motion is that on September second, third, and sixth, the light does not flash. It's continues. It operates as normal. Casey told me that in the in two thousand nineteen, they asked the police to not have it flash because it caused so much havoc. So that's one of my motions. And I'm willing to change things on whoever wants to second this. The second motion is that the city will collect parking tax on the parking fees charged, which is a is a given, but I just want to state it. Number three, all residents within, all residential residents within a thousand feet of the chili cook-off, and this is what we've done in the past, be given in advance a phone number for a city compliance officer and a sheriff representative during the event to call in case of complaints or violations. This is something we've done in the past. Now, this is a I talked to Richard about this today. Next motion is and this is first a question. Normally, we shut off. We said the event ends at ten. Everybody's got to leave by ten thirty. This time it says eleven with no, no time at all to shut off the lights. So unless somebody objects, I'd like to make the exit of all patrons by ten thirty and no ride lasts more than ten minutes. And have lights shut off at eleven, other than security lighting. So you don't leave the Ferris wheel all lit up and all that kind of stuff. The next motion is and this is something I think is real concerning. I did not talk to Casey about this, but all our all of our lots except fifty-five spaces at the construction site next door are substantial distances from the chili cook-off. And four hundred and fifty of them are up at the up at the City Hall and over by the tennis club, which requires them to walk down Stewart Ranch Road when everybody's exiting. So you you potentially have four hundred and fifty cars coming at all the people going back up to get their cars. So I would like to have a provision that a shuttle be provided after sunset to take people to their those four parking lots. The next and then I would add the staff's recommendation that we comply with state and can I guess state and Los Angeles laws. I guess county too, whatever their wording is. And I think those are all reasonable. I think we some of them we need public safety for. So that's my motion, hopefully, and I'm open to changing, but hopefully we get a second.
Let's see if you get a second first.
I I would second with a slight friendly amendment, which would be to say that just to point out on the Uber stuff, there are really two components to that issue. One is the time it takes to pick up and drop off the actual loading process. The other is where these cars are going to be waiting and hoping to get a ride or just hanging out. And it strikes me that you might be able to work out something where you had, I don't know, three or five spaces as the loading spots within the county parking lot, the library parking lot, the ADA lot. And but you could tell the Uber drivers if they just want to hang out and they want to sit in a parking spot, they could go along on the eighty or hundred spots we have over on Malibu Road by the Colony and between the the Cold War Banker and the Colony Office. There's a bunch of spots over there that are rarely very full.
Okay, let me let me comment on that. I thought about specific Uber waiting areas and whether or not they would be taken up by people waiting to get hailed by Uber. Three or four spots. There's most of the shopping centers are empty after nine o'clock, most of them. So it's mostly drop-off in the beginning where you're going to have conflicts.
Hold on just a second, John. Trevor?
Yeah, I want to jump in on this Uber issue. It seems to it seems everyone doesn't like the Uber setup that's approved here. But there's no real consensus about what it would look like. My suggestion would be that you remove the Uber part from this TUP and let them process a separate TUP amendment to this through Richard that he could just do administratively. At this point, we don't seem to have any kind of direction about that unless you have some kind of conditions that you want to apply to the Uber pickup drop-off. But I think that should be properly studied instead of just
I'm willing to put the same provision in that we had for the condo, you know, the the staff, Public Works or Richard, I I don't know which is more appropriate, can approve that. I hope they understand that Civic Center Way, at least during the day, is supposed to have spaces for the library and the park. But that's I if Craig's willing, I'm I'm willing to go with that.
Yeah, that would be fine with me. And then I had one other thought to add to that.
Okay, hold on just a second. We're getting getting ahead of ourselves here. So the motion is to approve the staff recommendation with those conditions that you listed, except including the the provision that the angle parking is off the table, but other than that, things can be worked out with the Public Works Director or the or the Planning Director as far as the Uber situation is concerned. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I think we need to process that as an amendment. It's very ambiguous what you're trying to delegate here to them because it could be a lot of different spaces. So
Well, we're delegating the choice of Uber's Uber and Lyft services. Any provision to accommodate them to Richard?
John, I think I think Trevor's point is that he wants it done as a separate application to be dealt with separately. So your motion, if if you comply with that, your motion would be to, yes, Richard?
Sorry, maybe this would help to speed it along. It sounds, if I understand the commissioner's correct, it seems like there's some appetite for the Uber drop-off to be number one closer to the front gate. And also, I was hearing words about it perhaps in the county law.
And I I I question that a little because I think it takes some supervision. I think it at nighttime, we won't have much supervision over there. There'd be no reason for ADA parking or the library parking to be supervised at that point. So I don't think you should have an unsupervised area. But again, this is a the way I motion is, is it's up to you.
Well, all right. So but what what Trevor is trying to say is that our motion shouldn't say it's up to you. Our motion should be limited to the other conditions that you wanted to impose, including that that Uber pickup and drop-off at the angle parking on Civic Center Way should not be considered in a future application. Is that right, Trevor? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, my suggestion is just that you you remove that you remove the the Uber location and just from it, that's that's enough right there. You're giving direction to Richard here. I think he understands what you're looking for in this and that they'll process a separate TUP amendment that will go through a process so they can see what's possible. And then it goes through and someone have a chance to appeal or address it, you know, when that comes through.
I accept that.
Let me make one point, and that is that Uber drivers don't sit around hoping to pick up fares. Just one brief story. I went to a Hollywood Bowl event one time when Uber was first getting started and all the Uber drivers came in, but they had to match up with the individual person coming out of the Hollywood Bowl. It was the biggest nightmare you've ever seen. So that's not the way that Uber works. They don't they don't hang around looking for fares. Okay, so
Casey has her hand up.
Who did?
Casey has her hand up.
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
Hi, thank you. I just, this is separate from the Uber. I wanted to address Commissioner Mazza's request to have shuttles to the surrounding lots. We have with, I mean, that presents challenges in and of itself. I'd just like to point out that we do have pedestrian pathways that are from that go all the way up Stewart Ranch Road to those parking lots, and those are, you know, we have personnel that are handling those. There's signage that says stay on pathway. Providing shuttles for thousands of pedestrians at sundown is probably not something that is 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 doable for us on our end. It's it's cross pop cost prohibitive.
Well, I just want to comment on that. We all know Stewart Ranch Road. It's about twenty feet wide. Okay, and you're talking four hundred and fifty cars. Okay? We don't have a patrol. It's dark. Unless it's lit up, it's dangerous. Period. Now, I'm not talking about a continuous shuttle. My motion is sundown to ten o'clock. You get a school bus, you run it around, and people get on it, get off it. It's it's two or three hours. Why that's cost prohibitive, but if we splatter somebody and you have a lot of kids, what are we going to do?
John, I understand your point. You've made it. It's getting late. Let's move on. Trevor?
Yeah, I was gonna say, they're not proposing that. So unless they're willing to accept it, you know, and we can force them to put a shuttle as part of it, you know, we don't know how that would operate exactly.
As far as I'm concerned, we can for public health and safety, we can enforce anything. Okay?
Okay, so
no police, that's crazy. Okay, so that's my motion.
Right.
Any anybody else got anything to add?
Thank you, John. Craig? You're you're muted, Craig.
If there's any appetite to say that on only Friday and Saturday nights, the sound could go to ten instead of nine with those two weekend nights. And that on Sunday morning, it start at noon, not at eleven. Or every morning at noon, not at eleven. But I mean, I don't want to limit it more than it is, but just a little bit later on the weekend nights and starting a little bit later on Sunday.
The reason I wouldn't want to accept that is that we've gone decades with peaceful relationships with the people in Harbor Vista and the condos. Because it's a sound bowl, everybody knows that you make some noise down the bottom of the bowl, it goes right up the hill and the bottom of the bowl, it goes right up the hill and, and it's worked. And we don't have objections and, and the neighbors have cooperated all these years.
Okay, so John, you wouldn't accept that as a friendly amendment. Craig, do you want to offer it, uh, as an amendment?
Uh, if there's no appetite for it, I, I don't, I'm not seeing what other people are thinking.
Why don't you offer it as an amendment and see if you get a second?
Okay, I'll offer that as an amendment. Anybody want to second that? No? Okay.
Bails for one of a second, okay. Are there further amendments to be offered to John's motion? Okay, hearing none. Um, Trevor, you want to try and restate it?
Sure.
If I can jump before you, Trevor, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Richard.
Um, Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have uh, thirty-seven was last year's lighting condition. I, I just want to make sure that if we start changing some conditions around here, we don't have a conflict with existing. So it, that was one, and I know there was a concern about the lighting being later than normal. And then the second thing was there was going to be an amendment for a condition of a twenty-four hour contact. And typically the twenty-four hour contact is the event operator. And, and that person's number is included as condition fifty-eight. Uh, is that a current number? Uh, just to confirm, Jessica?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, I, I don't know if I missed any others, but I wanted to bring those up because those were amendments that the Commission wanted.
Well, let me, let me just, uh, say that in talking to Casey in two thousand nineteen, it caused such a problem that they asked the police to get the light turned back on. That's why I put that in there, because it, we have another provision that says you can't back up on, on the highway and they have to have somebody directing traffic and blah, blah, blah. And I think there's something like eighty thousand cars a day that go through there on Z traffic. If you make every single one of them stop, you got a big problem.
Casey has her hand up.
Yes.
Okay.
Casey?
Hi, thanks. I just want to clarify, um, that in two thousand nineteen, um, what Commissioner Mazza is saying is, is accurate. However, um, sheriffs were the entity that made the determination that the red light would not flash. It was not our request. They determined that it was in the best interest of traffic flow and public safety for the red light be moved to normal operations.
Okay, and then Richard, the, uh, the other thing I think you brought up was the, the, the motion I made about time was using the same time we used in prior years, that for some reason this year, it had changed to half an hour.
Did it, Jessica, I believe you looked at that, right? We are consistent with last year?
Yes, I just use the same conditions from the previous year, as far as the lighting.
But there's, there, I know there was a provision at one point that there was a time when it shuts off. The way it reads it now, there is no shut off time. They could stay up, they could keep all the lights on all night. There's just a, uh, condition that says the patrons must leave.
So the condition reads, all amusement and sight lighting shall be directed away from Malibu Knoll's neighborhood, located immediately to the north, shall not illuminate areas beyond the event and parking site. In addition, all carnival lighting shall be turned off as soon as possible after ten P M. Would you like, that's condition thirty-seven. Would you like that amended to have a hard?
Well, number one, number one, it's in conflict with the, the first one I made about ten thirty. You're saying people are supposed to be there at ten thirty. You're telling them to turn it off at ten. See, I'm trying to line things up. And as soon as possible is, is a vague term. We, I know at some point in the past, we had an absolute time, uh, that it was shut off, and I'm trying to get back to where we have absolutes and there's no problem. Um.
You could say as soon as possible and in any case, no later than X.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's basically what I'm saying. Uh, now, the thing about notification, I know in the past we had a sheriff's number they could call. It wasn't the carnival operator. Uh, it was the sheriff, there was a sheriff's number if there were violations, and there was a city number if there were complaints.
Okay, that, that's your motion, John, and let's, let's, if, if, unless there's further discussion on it, let's, let's move forward. Trevor?
Okay, so to clarify, uh, it sounds like, uh, Commissioner Mazza is not changing any of the conditions that he was talking about. So here's what I have is number one.
I changed the Uber one.
Yeah, yes, that was one of, sorry, I meant in response to what Richard was saying. So, uh, the first is that, um, the Uber drop off shall be locate, relocated, um, in a new location. The second, what was the flashing light? I don't think they have control of that. You had a condition, what about the flashing light? Can we remove that? It doesn't seem like they have control over the flashing light.
The, the, the amendment I was making is that the, the light would not flash on September sec, October, September second, third and sixth, which are weekdays.
Can we, can we just make that a request? Because I don't think they can control what that is. They, they don't control that.
Yeah, I was gonna ask to take that one out, too.
I think, yes. So is the motion then to remove condition number eleven?
What's condition eleven?
That's what you're talking about with the lights.
That's the actual condition, Trevor, saying that they will flash.
They are able to control that, Richard? Okay.
And I have Public Works available. Troy is available from the Public Works Department, and if you need an explanation on that.
Hey, Rob, I see his, his, Marissa's, Marissa's got her hand up. Is Marissa involved in this? Are you representing the Boys and Girls Club, Marissa?
No, um, I'm not, but I was a founding member with one of your council members of the Kiwanis.
No, 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 we're done. We've.
Okay, I just, I was just getting frustrated. For thirty-seven years, we did it, and now it's being so micromanaged, it's falling apart. Let the, let the girl have her event for.
Thank you. Um, you're not the only person who's getting frustrated.
Yeah, okay. I think Commissioner Mazza, can you, can you confirm how you want condition eleven to be changed? It says during event times, a signal at the intersection of Stewart Ranch Road and Civic Center Way should be placed on all flashing reds and traffic control will be placed by the applicant.
Right, and I'm, I'm, I'm willing to leave the weekend. I'm saying shall not flash on weekdays, the third, the second, third and sixth.
So be placed on all flashing reds and traffic controls, rather likely.
Now, I could, I think it's better if Craig goes along with this to say it's optional on the weekend, but I want to ban it on weekdays because it's just going to be a disaster.
Okay, so should we place on all flashing reds except for weekdays? Would that be the addition you want?
Yeah.
Okay, except for weekdays. The next one.
Parking rights will be collected.
Okay, we, well, I mean, the, that's a direction to this. They don't control the tax. The tax is required by the city to be collected. We can't.
Okay.
All residents within one thousand feet of the cookoff site will be given a phone number for a city compliance officer and a sheriff's department representative.
During, during the event.
During the event.
Event hours, not all day long, just event hours.
I, I can't.
We, we just require them to be given the, the phone number for this, right?
Right, that's it. Just notify them somewhere to call if they're going berserk.
Richard?
Well, I was gonna say, it would end up being the General Lost Hills number. I want to be clear about that. We wouldn't have some sort of uh, bat phone number to the sheriff's department to, to give folks. I want to be clear about that.
Okay, but that, that could be sent out as a mailer of, of just, uh, you know, the code enforcement officer and the sheriff your phone numbers, that, that could be distributed to residents within a thousand.
Fine, we've done that in the past.
The next one, uh, patrons shall exit by ten thirty P M. The next one is lighting, except for security lighting, shall be out by eleven o'clock P M. Next one is Jessica Thompson's COVID condition, which she read at the beginning. And then finally, we have the shuttle, and so I wasn't sure what the shuttle exactly condition is going to be.
The condition of the shuttle is after sundown, the shuttle will be provided for remote lots.
What are the room, what, what do you consider?
Anything over three hundred feet, which is anything but uh, because we, anything but the, 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 the county building, county law.
I'd like to offer an unfriendly amendment to remove that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Uh, Trevor, have you finished with your summation?
So the condition then is after sundown, a shuttle shall be provided to parking locations located more than three hundred feet from the event, right?
Correct.
That's it? John, that's your motion?
Well, you got the county one in there, right? The county and city, the, the.
The COVID? Yes, that was Jessica.
Okay.
That's your motion. Craig, you were the second, or that's your, that you, you're agree with that?
I, I, I don't need the shuttle. Otherwise, I'd agree with it.
Okay, well, if you're going to get rid of the shuttle, I highly suggest that you require insurance for.
Okay, we're not going there. Hold on a minute.
Offsite.
I'm gonna go.
Offsite.
They'll, they'll have insurance.
Richard?
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, Trevor, uh, you're second to last amendment there. Perhaps we could just, on the event attendees, be offsite by ten thirty? We could just simply, uh, identify a condition number fifty-four to be modified to not, right now, it says attendees will be offsite by eleven. We could just change condition fifty-four to ten thirty.
Correct.
Okay, condition fifty-four, Richard?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay, now you need a motion to get rid of my shuttle.
That's what I was moving before. I'd like.
If somebody gets killed, you're the guy. Okay, make the motion.
All right, so, um, no, I'm trying to get it sorted out as to where we are procedurally. That's your motion. Craig is saying that he's not seconding that because it includes the shuttle provision. Is that correct, Craig?
Correct.
So, uh, you, is there anybody else going to second that, that, uh, John's motion if it includes the shuttle? Okay, none. John, you want your motion to fail for lack of a second, or you want to remove the shuttle?
I'll remove the shuttle as long as David will pay for the funerals.
Okay. I, I, I think David will pay for the funeral. Um, all right, so you've removed the, the shuttle, Craig. You're now the seconder of that motion?
Yeah, I'm good with it then.
Okay, fine. It's moved and seconded. Now, uh, further discussion. You guys have, saw a lot of hands up. Dennis, you had a hand up?
I, I, I just want to, I was gonna propose another, uh, yeah, I, I want to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay, we, we've got a motion on the table, so, uh, you could vote, if you have another motion you'd like to see passed, you can vote no on this one, then you can make another.
Make it amendment.
We can only have one emotion, one motion on the table at a time.
Yeah, I just want to make an amendment to my motion.
I think, I think what he was proposing is he just wanted to do the staff recommendation.
Oh, okay.
So, let's, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Vice Chair Wile?
No.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
All right, it's now, uh, ten minutes of eleven. We have one more item on the table. We don't start new items after ten thirty.
Uh, I, I, Mr. Chairman? I think in this case, we could finish this item in five minutes.
Hey, you dreamer.
You know, for sure, if we change something, it'll go to City Castle, change it back. So uh, unless we have a hearing, we have to hold, I move we accept staff's recommendation.
Well, all right, let's, 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 uh, we do have to hold a hearing, so let's, let's get a staff report. This is, we're now, we, we just concluded item five A, we're now at item five B. This is a coastal development permit for the, uh, two miles of stretch along Pacific Coast Highway. Twenty-four, two oh one, point five.
We're, we're almost eleven o'clock. Why are we not continuing this? This is going to take a long time. This is.
You make.
Uh, one reason is we're going to get a hundred emails if we bring this back and do it again, and I'd rather not get another hundred emails.
All right, it's, it's, it's the Commission's pleasure. If, if, if the three of us that want to go forward, we can go forward, so. Uh, what do you say, Dennis?
Let's go. We're here.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm holding you to your word, John.
My word is, my word is it's going to take a long time.
I would, I vote to continue.
What's that?
I would move to continue.
John would move to continue?
Yes.
Is that you?
Yes, it's me.
You just said it was five minutes, Commissioner Mazza.
Now, apparently it's not going to be, and I, I apparently they think it's going to take a while. I don't think we should, I, I personally believe after ten thirty, we make huge mistakes.
It's, uh.
Any controversy here? I vote no. We should continue.
Is that, is it to?
All right.
Or an uncertain date?
An uncertain date?
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next regular meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Unless, unless Richard has an objection, I think maybe next meeting we have that hotel. I don't know.
Well, I think that's going on a special meeting.
That's a special meeting.
The hotel's a special meeting in the next.
No, the other hotel. We got two hotels we're giving away.
Yeah, if you're talking.
It's like you own the land.
You're talking about the old Christie's, the former Christie's?
Yeah.
Yeah, what meeting should we put this to, Richard?
Okay, well, Richard, what date would you like this continued to?
Rob, how far can, does this have to be heard next month, or can it go to September?
Oh, the, the sooner the better. Uh, we're so close to getting this approved by Caltrans. Sooner the better.
This is, this is too simple. This is a staff recommendation.
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm one question. Richard, when would you like this matter continued to?
Uh, how about we, the problem is, we've got packed agendas for you. That, the month of August, I'm, I'm trying to get the date here for our special meeting.
You want to continue it to this Thursday? We've got another special meeting on the planning thing. Pack it in with that.
Trevor?
That's gonna be.
The housing element, that's a, that's a workshop. That's not really a, a meeting. Oh, I know that is a meeting, but we ju- we should, we usually keep that just for the housing element.
How about we do?
It's not a meeting. I should have kept my Dodger tickets.
Sorry.
How about we do Thursday, the twenty-sixth?
What, the twenties?
Another extra meeting?
Another special meeting?
No way. I can't have five meetings in four weeks.
We can do it Thursday. This Thursday?
Yeah.
Uh, sorry, me.
No.
Are there no decisions?
Yeah, we've already noticed that as a special meeting, we have the agendas already out. I mean, I think we should just put this to, i- i- it's September if we can't do it to, or put it to a meeting in August, and then you can recontinue it if you need to.
I'd like to know the last time Caltrans acted quickly on building anything.
Richard? I'm waiting, I'm waiting for, I'm waiting.
We need to go here. We need to go.
I gotta have the power to, to mute microphones. Richard?
What I'm saying is Thursday, the twenty-sixth, is a special meeting we're putting together in August, which will be the meeting, uh, for the, the hotel that is in the eastern portion of the city. So there's that meeting if the Commission wishes, so that's Thursday, the twenty-sixth.
You can't continue it to a meeting we don't have set yet. If we're trying to a date certain, we need to set to a meeting that we have.
Do, uh, September seventh.
Okay.
Okay.
Helen?
It's actually September eighth because we have, um, holiday on Monday and Tuesday. So we, it's Wednesday.
Okay, I know we move it to September se- uh, eighth.
September eighth, that's your motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, there's a further discussion. Dennis?
I, directed to Bo, I said, we gotta get going on this. I can see what he's up against. I used to do this kind of work. I know what he, we can the, really, we could do this, and by the time we've talked about this, we could have taken a vote and moved it forward because we don't have control over the road. All the people that gave us emails think that we have control over it. We don't. We're just making some changes out in the medians, which actually gives them more room to ride the bikes. We, see, we could have been done by now.
I agree with you. I was willing to push through it, but, uh, not if, uh, not if it's going to be a long hearing. It's
And this, you know.
Too, too problematic at this time of night.
We have a second?
It's, I'll second it if it's, uh, if nobody else.
I'll go home.
Yeah, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Oh, yeah.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move readjourn.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mazza? Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, good night, everyone.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Wild?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.